I'd like to call this special meeting to order. Town Planning and Zoning Thursday, December 19th at 7:07 PM. Seems to be an echo. First item on the agenda is a roll call.
Joyce, do you have the roll?
Problem is, I can't see everybody that's there.
It's okay. You could just call the roll.
Okay. Chair Lester?
Here.
Commissioner Hussain? Absent. Commissioner Bolton? Absent. Commissioner Mallett?
Here.
Commissioner Kevin Goff?
Here.
Commissioner Peters?
Here.
Commissioner Blant, I see you. Commissioner Blant?
Here.
Yep. Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Anno?
I know.
Marsh Neely? Commissioner Marsh Neely is absent. We have a call.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, per request from the Recording Secretary, Chair entertain a motion to table the minutes from the September 26th meeting, minutes from the October 24th meeting, and minutes from the December 5th meeting. Is there a motion? To table.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Chair votes aye.
Excuse me? Please, who was it seconded by?
Commissioner Goff.
Two people, myself and someone else. You choose.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is going to be a presentation of our Plan and Conservation Development by Justin LaFautaine of York &amp; Gorman. Like, name and address?
Sure. So I am Justin LaFautaine, Senior Vice President of Planning and Economic Development for Gorman &amp; York, 55 Heartland Street in East Hartford. Can everybody hear me okay? I got a weird echo, it sounds like.
Yeah.
We can hear you fine, Justin. There does seem to be an echo, but I'm not sure how we're going to get rid of it.
All right, no worries. So, it's very exciting to be back here. I think you all know me as I used to be the Director of Building and Land Use for the Town of Bloomfield, but things have changed. I'm with Gorman &amp; York now, so we were recently contracted with the Town of Bloomfield to take a look at the Plan of Conservation Development that was prepared previously for the town, go through it, really try to make it a little bit more cohesive, a little bit more Bloomfield-centric, and make it a little more future-oriented. So, what I'm going to do tonight, I don't want to take too, too much of your time, because I know you have a couple of applications on the agenda, but I do have, Linda has the document that can be shared on the screen. We're not going to go through page by page, that would take hours, but I'm going to kind of go over the highlights for you of the changes that we have made.
One moment, I'm sharing soon.
All right. So, one of the big things that we did, and this has always been a, when I'm going through a Plan of Conservation Development, something I always find very important and very useful, is to ensure that the goals and the strategies are not only in a separate sort of appendix at the end of the document, but included throughout the chapters of the document as well. The reason for that is, a lot of times when you're going through a document like this, if you're a resident, a developer, what have you, you're really probably not going to be reading everything page by page. So, it's helpful to have all those strategies and goals interspersed within the sections, so that way everybody knows where everybody's going, and you can find what you're looking for quickly and easily. So that's one of the major changes that you're going to see in here. So Linda, if you wouldn't mind going to, let's say, page 38. And this will just kind of give you an example of what that is. So if you scroll back to the previous page, I'm sorry, I'm going to be having you scroll through. Apologize for that.
No problem. Make it, there you go. Previous page, 37, okay.
So what you're going to see throughout the document is you're going to have the, you know, in this case, it's the Natural Resources section. You're going to flip to the next page, and you're going to have several pages of an implementation table. So that's, quite honestly, added several pages to the document as a whole, but I think it's very necessary to do that, just from a ease and convenience standpoint. The other major thing that we did was, as we were going through this plan, we found that there were a lot of topics and strategies and current events in the town that really weren't being discussed. So partially with my sort of insider knowledge of Bloomfield, and then partially with the help of your comments and staff comments, we were able to address some of those things and include them in. And that includes things like, you know, for example, the need for senior and age-restricted housing was really not mentioned at all in the text of the document. I think there was one strategy for it, but other than that, it remained silent. The Affordable Housing Plan wasn't referenced in the text of the document, which is another document that was created by you guys. So it's important to include that in here. You really want to make sure that all of that is a part of this plan, as this is the overarching, you know, a lot of people call it a master plan in different states, but this is what this is. So it's important to include all those references in. One of the things that also wasn't included was the Town Center Economic Development Commission. There was very, very little mention of development in the town center and the goals for developing the town center. So we made sure to include that, and Linda, if you want to go to page, let's see, 62? This page is kind of a good example of the things that we tried to add in. First of all, this is actually on the town center in general, as that wasn't mentioned. So we have a, you know, brief discussion of what's going on there with the Town Center Economic Development Commission. You know, the fact that that was created in itself is a big deal for the development of the town. But then the other type of section that we included is what you see on the right here. In this case, in this section's Future Growth Opportunities. As I mentioned, a lot of the strategies and actions included things that were obviously designed for the future, but they weren't discussed at all in the document, in the text of the document. So what we did is we elaborated on it. We called out some details, you know, we made sure to emphasize the TIF districts, the fact that you have a TIF master plan. It was mentioned, but we expanded upon it. We talked about the different areas that you have, since there's three different TIF districts in town. So we made sure that that was really made a central aspect and a driving force to push those into a more active role in the town. You know, right now, the commission, the TIF Advisory Committee is not active. So we made sure that the goal in here was to ensure that it becomes active. And, you know, to really try to publicize that, make it known that, you know, Granby and Toby Road, Blue Hills, and Town Center are areas where you can utilize these assets. Let's see. Another example of something like this is in the next chapter, in the Mobility Section. And Linda, if you could go to page 73? There have been talks over the years about the needs to improve both roadways and pedestrian trail access, things like that. In reviewing the current plan, I didn't see a lot of reference to that or a lot of reference to the future goals for that. So what I did was I, again, created a Future Improvement Section that created some very specific outlines for goals that we're talking about. You know, the Cottage Grove-Blue Hills intersection, which is one of the most accident-heavy intersections, and I think it's the most accident-heavy intersection in town. You know, that wasn't mentioned, so we tried to include things that were going to push the town to work with the state, keep in mind those are state roads, you know, to work towards improvements of those areas. We also included things like connections for trails. I know Commissioner Goff had sent a few recommendations that we included for different connections to different parts of town on those trails. You know, it was largely silent about the East Coast Greenway, so we made sure to include that. Those types of things that really, you know, I think make the plan more Bloomfield-centric were included now. And then I'm not going to go through all the different slides here, because it would take a long time, obviously, but, you know, in general, we, you know, we made sure that sustainability is now discussed in greater detail throughout the plan, which was, again, sort of silent in the original version. And then another thing was the town infrastructure projects. Those really weren't mentioned in great detail. You know, I know the police chief is looking to either relocate or expand the police station. Town Hall could use improvements. And the important thing to remember with a Plan of Conservation Development is, it's really a gateway to accessing grant funds from the state. So when you mention projects specifically, it allows you later on to say, hey, our 2025 POCD includes this, therefore we are a lot of these extra points in the grant application. So, we made sure to include those types of projects. Same thing with capital improvement projects, we made a section for that. One recommendation that we added completely was about becoming a certified local government in town. Basically, what that does is it's for historic district purposes and for historic preservation purposes. If you become a certified local government, you access grant funds that are available to you on a rolling basis. So essentially, it's, I think it's either $20,000 or $25,000 that just becomes accessible to you to do an inventory of historic properties in town. So it's important to include that, make sure that that goal is in there. We added a variety of new, specific goals to the implementation tables that were kind of either not as detailed as we thought they could have been, or, you know, missing entirely. And the one thing to mention in terms of the mapping, we were not contracted to update any of the maps, because that's a whole separate process in itself. So the maps weren't touched, with one exception. And that is, Linda, if you could go to, it's going to be the Future Land Use Map, which is on page 103? So originally, the Future Land Use Map, I assume it was just an oversight, but I think it's an important oversight that we wanted to address. Previously, the uses for the Future Land Use Map were high-density residential, industrial, low-density residential, medium-density residential, mixed-use parks and open space, and water bodies. Entirely leaves out commercial space. So we thought that that was very important to include. We didn't change any of the areas that, you know, were included on the map, because again, that's a whole separate process with using ArcGIS and ESRI. But what we did do is we added in the commercial and industrial, because quite honestly, what could happen is, you know, you have different applications that come in, they refer back to the Future Land Use Map, and they say, we're a commercial use. You don't mention any commercial uses in the future for your town. So it's important to include that. So in general, those are the kind of changes that were made throughout the document. Like I said, this wasn't a, you know, we weren't contracted to do a rewrite of the document. The bones of the document were there, but there were just certain aspects that certainly needed to be updated and improved. So at this point, I think I will turn it over to you for questions and comments. Anything, and Commissioner Goff talked to me earlier, anything that's, you know, just like a tweak that needs to be made in terms of, you know, typos or locational differences that need to be addressed, just send those to us. We can make sure that those are updated. That's not a problem. But other than that, if you have any questions or comments, happy to, happy to help.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. John, would you like to lead us off?
Well, I would just, I think that, as Justin indicated, I think they accomplished what I think were our significant concerns that we make this plan Bloomfield-centric, and that we include those items of goals and objectives that are important to us and to the community, and I think they've done that. I think the central significant task remaining for us, one is to obviously review and comment on this, so that we can release it for public review in accordance with the state statutes. But, secondly and equally important is I think we need to take, you know, and I would think at our next meeting, take a good, hard look at the Future Land Use Map. And as Justin indicated, they did not make any changes to that. And we will have to get the files, specific files for that, and then, subject to the commission's requirements, we probably can make the changes here in-house with our IT staff and mapping staff. And then the second thing that we may want to consider at some point is is expanding the size of these maps, so that they're, you know, they're obviously far more legible and easy to read than they are in the size that they're in the book at present. But I'm satisfied that we've come a long way, and I think we now have a document that we can, you know, we can cross the i's and dot the t's, and then I think we should be ready to make it available for public review in the 65-day review period, so that I would be aiming for our February meeting to formally adopt it, and we can be on our merry way.
Great, thank you.
And I'd just like to express, on behalf of the staff, thanks and appreciation to Gorman &amp; York for their very prompt response to our request to have assistance in finalizing the plan.
Mr. Chairman, one comment if I could, based on John's comments. I totally agree with the size of the maps, and one suggestion I might have is, you know, keeping them in the document as they are now, but including a separate appendix that includes them all sort of blown up. Because that way, again, you keep it in the text of the document without, you know, expanding the pages too, too much, but you also have a section at the end that includes large-scale maps, so people can flip to them and say, okay, well, this is what we're really talking about here. Just not to... For what it's worth.
Thank you. We're going to start with any questions. Katie, we'll start online with you. You have any questions or comments for Justin?
Mostly comments. That everything that you just outlined seems like it was so very important to the town, and I'm just happy that we're able to document it all and look forward to, you know, reviewing it and and making sure that we really do have the details in there that we need to go forward developing the town.
Okay, thank you. I see Commissioner Hussain came in. Kevin, I don't know if you heard the presentation, but if you have any questions or comments for Justin?
No, I came in a little late. I do apologize, but I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll start at this end. Commissioner Mallett?
I'll have a few very minor things I'll just send for clarification in email, but in general, I absolutely love the new addition of the future sections, the future plans. It was helpful to see the specifics on the town center, the Blue Hills Cottage Grove Road intersection, some of the things you highlighted. So that was definitely noticed. And I think the rest of them may or may not, probably would be in more details when we get to more of some of the affordable housing discussions, but at least I think it captures the base that we can launch from, so... And I do like the recommendations or the summaries at the end. It's much easier to reference, so thank you. I think we're really close to just ready to share this. So thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I don't have any additional comments. I'm just excited to take a deeper dive in this and be able to fully digest it, and just like we just said, adopt it hopefully in February. Thank you.
Commissioner Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I will echo my colleagues. I do think this is, you know, what you've done is a definite improvement. As Commissioner Mallett said, I have some things from when we went through this draft before that didn't get changed, but there are a lot of tweaks here and there, and getting rid of things in Bloomfield that don't exist that are mentioned, which will be good. I'm glad we've talked about the maps, because I agree, bigger maps. I do want to mention three specific things that I think would be good for you guys to look at. There is a section, you know, one of the things when we get to the Land Use Map, and we've had this with every Plan of Conservation Development, and it is included in here about preserving farmland. You mentioned commercial. I think we need to do the, we need to have farmland mentioned on the Future Land Use Map, and I think we need to specify those places, because that's really what we should be looking at, but that's in a map thing. In the discussion in the actual draft plan, page 34 is when they talk about the farmland soils, and I find that section, as it was produced, not very helpful, because even though they give a farmland soil map, who knows how much of that is still left, because a lot of those farmland soils are buried under things. Sure. So I would just suggest that that section, you go back to the previous Plan of Conservation Development, the 2012, which taught, and in that Plan of Conservation Development is page 33, and see if you can maybe pull some of the material over from that Plan of Conservation Development into this, because it's more relevant. On page 56, when you talk about the tax revenues by various entities, you give, for example, you give Connecticut General, or you give Cigna. The numbers given in the current plan, the current draft are incorrect, because they're non-consolidated. And this is a problem I've run into when I've talked to the assessor, because they print out lists of the highest, and the way Cigna does their taxes is they put all their personal property under a different company. So to get the correct Cigna number, you have to consolidate, and I've got some notes in what I'll give you.
That's perfect.
So just make sure the numbers there are consolidated numbers, so that they are correctly the largest taxpayers. And finally, the other thing, and I found this very curious about the 2012 Plan of Conservation Development also, when we get to the infrastructure section, and in this section, in this case, it's on page, at the end's on page 83, and I think here we call it Facilities. Whatever we call that section, oh, I'm in the old ones. Whatever we call that section in here. Yeah, it's in the Facilities and Services. At the end of that section, there is a long discussion, correctly, about water and sewer and various things. There is no discussion about the electric system, the electric grid, the gas, you know, natural gas lines in town. And it seems like, you know, it seems like there should be more mention of that kind of thing. Sure. And, you know, one of my things I would like to see, especially as a planning commission, both for safety and power outages and stuff, is that we should be burying utility lines. But that's a personal preference, but I think it should be, all that should be discussed. Other than that, though, those are three specifics that I think, more depth. I think what you've done, though, is really good, and look forward, as I said, getting the final draft out there for the public, and I think we can easily do that in February, but no problem.
Great.
Thank you.
No, those are great comments. We can definitely make sure that we address those.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner James?
Also echo, thanks to Gorman &amp; York and you, Justin. Just appreciate the updates. One thing I'm noticing in the Future Land Use categories, each of the categories calls out single-family homes. And if our goals include a more diverse housing stock, incentivizing affordable housing development, a full, or that's a separate piece, but just having that language, I mean, it seems like it's written in those Future Land Use categories as they exist today, but if it's a Future Land Use, should we be using more opportunities to call out more diverse housing stock options? I know that's something that was included in the Affordable Housing Plan, so to have it reflected in the POCD would be helpful. That's all for me.
That's another great comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hussain?
Sorry, I do apologize. I do have a question, or a comment. And again, I do apologize. I missed the last POCD. What's Justin's role in this again? The last I heard, I know Justin had moved over to another town, so please enlighten me.
So Kevin, I now work for Gorman &amp; York. I'm the Senior Vice President of Planning and Economic Development. So the town contracted with Gorman &amp; York to make some updates to the plan. So that's why you're seeing me again.
Okay, great. Thank you, Justin. So I guess a lot has happened in the last few months, I guess, or three years, so... All right, so here's what I'm going to add, and this comes from, I I travel a lot for work, and I see a lot of the future of, in terms of technology, and we're going in terms of infrastructure and everything. And a lot of the things that come up is, you know, what are firms of the future going to look like? What are towns of the future going to look like? And I'm interested in this, because there's a lot of digitization, which is creating a lot of efficiency. Digitizations and infrastructure side on the, on every side, right? And of course, because of, in a part, because it helps with security and so forth. So I guess the question is there, is there any thought about putting in something about digitizing our plans as we go in the future, and these new applicants and these new developers? And the reason I say that is that maybe we can eventually become, have, you know, everyone is accustomed to 2D paper plans, and they are firms on the West Coast, and it's slowly coming to the East Coast, but it would be great if our town could be one of the first to have almost like a digital twin of all the new, I can't hold, I can't hold the new, the old, the old infrastructure, obviously, everything that's built, but anything for the new infrastructure, have a digital twin as part of that submission. And I know it's a whole looking ahead with AI and all this type of stuff, but if we can at least start creating a digitize of the future, what the plans are going to look like, and maybe, you know, 20 years from now, starting creating that bank is going to help the engineers and the maintenance forces and the, you know, our folks in Bloomfield to help, you know, be in the town of the future, because we'd already have digital twins of all these new assets that we're putting in. And kind of like what Kevin is saying, it's not only going to be the infrastructure, the structural, it could be electrical, mechanical, plumbing, fire, and everything like that. And it may, now, we're doing it now, but 20 years from now, 30 years from now, we could probably be way ahead of the game. Curious if you guys have looked into anything like that, and how do you think that applies?
Yeah, I mean, right off the bat, I think it's a great idea. You know, a lot of towns are starting to include requirements that, you know, plans submitted be either entirely submitted virtually in terms of, you know, an online portal or, you know, a PDF file, something like that. But I think it makes a whole lot of sense, you know, if the town wants to keep requesting paper copies, they can, but also, you know, a digital version to have that. I think you're starting to see that in a lot of larger cities. Connecticut, as we all know, is sort of, we're tough to evolve. But that said, I think it makes a lot of sense for everybody. In the end, it might save a little bit of money, both for the town and the developer, you know, in terms of mailing packets and whatnot. You wouldn't have large paper packets that you got to take the time to send out and everything. That really ends up being a discussion amongst, you know, this group, to determine what exactly you'd like to see. In the end, it would end up being a change in your zoning regulations, but I think it makes sense to include a goal in the implementation table that addresses that. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so I'd like to recommend that, to look, take a look at that as we go forward, because like I said, and not only that, you know, I think of, and I know it might be a silly reference, when you saw, you know, Iron Man sit in his room with all his digital twins of his suits and everything else, having that infrastructure, that is the future, believe it or not, because, I mean, I am an engineer, and we see this happening already, right? So it's going to happen, it's starting to happen, as I said, most of the stuff happens out in California, and it takes forever to get to, you know, to the East Coast, from the left side to the right side. But I think ideally, if we can start looking at that, I think it'll create a very effective, safe, and even more, a very, it's a very cheaper alternative in the long run. It's, you know, so, just want to throw it out there. I'd like you guys to look at the best practices, you know, look at some of the bigger cities and see what we can bring to Bloomfield and let us be the trendsetter for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hussain. And I just want to echo what some of my commissioners have said. You've done a great job. You've done a great job in filling in the gaps and doing some updates on our current plan. One of the things you mentioned is about having things in the PLCD when it comes to funding, and so, under the mobility and transportation goals, are we still talking about roundabouts in the center of town? And if we are, would that be something that should be included for future funding?
I don't know if John wants to address that one.
Funny you should ask. We are having conversations with the Department of Transportation about the intersection in the center of town. The last conversation was, was, was about roundabouts, and that did not pursue. We have, we have reactivated that conversation, but they're going to look at a variety of alternatives. The department has a new initiative to, to look at solutions that they have not necessarily looked at in the past, that are on the more creative side, that may or may not involve a roundabout, so that I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, that roundabouts are in the conversation, but they are only one of a series of alternatives that will be looked at over the, probably the ensuing months as we move forward, both with the town center plan and specifically looking at that intersection, so that any improvements to that intersection can be coordinated with revitalization of the town center.
Okay, so I guess would it be worthwhile to include some of those alternatives in the PLCD?
I'm not sure I would recommend a specific alternative, but I think, but I made a note to myself that it would be useful to probably call out that intersection, similar to the way we called out the Cottage Grove Road, Blue Hills intersection.
Okay, thank you.
So what I have in there right now is Strategy 2.2 in the mobility section. The way it's currently worded says, coordinate with CTDOT to ensure that needed improvements on state roadways or intersection of state roadways are addressed with a focus on the Cottage Grove and Blue Hills Avenue intersection and the town center, but we can certainly call that out more specifically.
Okay, great, thank you. Other than that, you did a great job. I have nothing else to say. Anything you'd like to say in closing, Justin?
Nothing in particular. What I would request from you all is if you could email all of your comments to John and Linda, that way when everybody has them, they can send them to me, we can make sure everything's included, get it back to you, you know. Ballpark guests, of course, it's the holidays, so it makes it a little bit more difficult, but what I would say is if you get your comments back to us, we could probably have the revisions done within, I would say, less than two weeks. As long as there's nothing major, but it doesn't sound like there really is, so I think it's easy enough to, to take care of that.
Great, thank you, and good seeing you again.
Good to see you, too.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a continuation of a public hearing. The application is 17 and 21R Watkins Road, 19 Overbrook Farm Road, 391 Simsbury Road.
Mr. Chairman, before you open the public hearing, could I just make a couple of comments?
Sure.
On behalf of the staff, we would like to apologize to the commission for the lateness that we, you have received the reports. Part of that was on both applications before you, and it's unacceptable to us, and it will not continue. We've had a lot of back and forth between town staff, not just our staff, but the wetland staff and the, and the engineer staff with the applicants, and so there have been ongoing revisions to plans. Going forward, I have, it is the staff's commitment that we intend to get a complete package. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. We intend to get a complete package to you. That means the agenda, the minutes, staff reports on the Friday before your next Thursday's meeting. We are going to cut off applications at three weeks before the meeting, so that both our staff and the rest of the town staff have time to review. We are going to insist that the other town staff have their comments to us at least three to four days before we have to have our reports to you, so that we can have some orderly process back in place to ensure that you have adequate time to both review, and if you have specific questions, back to the staff before presentations are made to you at a meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you very much, Jonathan. That would be much appreciated. We'll go back to reopening the public hearing. I'll just start from the beginning. The application is 17 and 21R Watkins Road, 19 Overbrook Farm Road, and 391 Simsbury Road, special permit and site plan applications per Section 5 dot 4 dot D dot 3 and 5 dot 4 dot I of Bloomfield zoning regulations for 32 single-family dwelling units in the PLR district. Applicant, TNM Homes Owner, Rehoboth Court LLC. Is there a motion to reopen this public hearing? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Okay. Someone here for the application?
Yes, Jim Cassidy, for the record. I'm engineer, principal engineer and professional engineer with the firm, Halsey Pearson Cassidy. First order of business is I'd like to be able to share my screen, if that's okay with you?
Yes, please.
Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Good evening. We appreciate your hearing us this evening. We were before you last month, well, we, which time we put on an initial presentation for the proposed development of a planned luxury residential development on 17 Watkins Road. You may recall this property. We were before you back in April of this past year, at which, with that time, we received a zone change or master plan approval for the, for the zone, I'm sorry, for the zone change for, for parcels. 17 Watkins Road, 21R Watkins Road, and 19 Overbrook Farm, in addition to, we had acquired this property at 391 Simsbury Road to make a uniform of property zone of the PLR zone. The photo I have, I'll be up before you right now, outlined in yellow, is the entire development parcel that we are looking at, consisting of 13.33 acres. Watkins Road is on the top with about 370 feet frontage along Watkins. Simsbury Road is off to the east or right with about 508 feet frontage on Simsbury Road. There are wetlands on the property at the southwest corner. There's a large wetlands area that flows in a subly direction. In addition to tumble down Brook flows across Simsbury Road in a subly direction along our easterly boundary line. At the last meeting, we presented our application, our site plan for the development of this property as a planned luxury residential development in total. We are looking at proposing a total of 32 single-family homes. Access to the site would have been off Watkins Road with a boulevard road coming in, going around, ending in a loop and connecting back into itself for a total length of about 1,200 feet. All the houses would have an individual two-car wide driveway to service the unit with access to a two-car driveway for each one of the 32 units. Overall utilities for this development, we'll start with storm drainage. It is proposed that the storm drainage, we've broken it to two separate parts. Dark blue lines represent the path of the storm drainage, so the northerly portion of the development would be, the stormwater runoff would be collected by a series of catch basins within the roadway, in addition to along the rear of the properties, then conveyed to a stormwater management basin up at this front northeasterly corner of the property. The back or southwesterly half of the property, similarly, there'd be a series of catch basins within the roadway and the backyards. They would also collect runoff and discharge to stormwater basin at the back of the property. Utilities, we are proposing that the whole development be serviced by sanitary sewers. There is an existing sanitary sewer manhole at the back of Still Mountain Estates, which is off to the south of this project, by this flip page here. This is, this would be Overbrook Farm Road. This is the back of our development. This orange line represents the back property line of Still Mountain Estates. There's a manhole and a 20-foot wide easement across property at 20 Overbrook Farm Road. We're going to be extending a sewer line up that easement across Overbrook Farm Road into the back of our project, which ultimately provides gravity sanitary sewer service throughout the entire development. So these all will be serviced by gravity sanitary sewers. In addition to, I'm sorry, we'll be extending a water main off of Watkins Road, continuing through the development, ending in a loop in the system, providing domestic water to each one of the individual units, along with gas service will be provided to these units, and all the utilities such as electric and communication would be underground. As was mentioned, we've been through a process in attaining a wetlands approval. We were before the Wetlands Commission this past Monday, at which we did receive an ANOS approval for the development of this property as the 32-unit luxury residential units. At the last meeting, we had represented that there were some changes that were being requested of the, of the Wetlands Commission. So what's happened since we last met you and the wetlands meeting that we had this past Monday, is we had to actually go back and we had to modify, use some of the unit locations and dimensions of the units. I'm just going to show you a plan comparing what's actually changed. Sorry. So at the southwesterly corner of the site, what I have outlined in red is the original proposal that was before you. The concern at this corner from the Wetlands Commission was that we were in close proximity to the wetlands. What we've done is we reconfigured the footprint of these two units in particulars, two units number 13 and number 14, to eliminate a bump out on the front. This allowed us to pull these two units about 21 feet forward. In addition to, it allowed us to pull the clearing line along the back of these 21 feet forward, providing a minimum of 30-foot buffer to the wetlands that's off to the southwest. In addition to, there was a concern about these three units here, 28, 27, and 26, and their proximity to tumble down Brook. What we've done is we've modified the configuration of the road in the front section. Originally, we had 18-foot drive aisle in, 18-foot drive aisle out, and a 10-foot island. We've revised those to be a 12-foot in, 12-foot out, and kept the 10-foot island, but what that allowed us to do is take this curb line on the easterly side of Entrance Drive and bring it over 12 feet, and in turn, slide these units over 12 feet. So we've been able to increase our buffer to that wetlands also. In addition to, at the prior planning and zoning meeting, there were some comments about the separation distance between the buildings. There were some spots where we were showing less than 20 feet. The 20-foot required, or 20-foot request is not a specific requirement in the PLR zone. It's just something that was requested that we tried to achieve. So we've also gone back and we changed several of the footprints. Again, in particular, if you look at this area of building number five and six, we revised the footprints, red was the original, where there was only 18 feet between the units, and we revised it to provide 20. So the majority of the units at this point all have at least 20 feet between each unit. There's only a few inch points, and where we have areas that are less than 20 feet are in particular, if I look at 10 and 11, at this front corner, it is 16 feet. But these are at an angle, so by the time you start to go back, by the time I get to the back corner of this 15-foot wall, I'm actually at 30, by the time I get to the back, I'm at 65. So the average of this is far, far more than 20 feet, and similar, we have the situation on 12 and 13. We, at the front is 16, but is by the time you get about 10 feet back, you're at 22 and 47 by the time you get to the back of that. We've also gone back and added some other features. There was questions about how do we handle mail pickup. Along our access drive, we provided a small turnout area with a pad to support, a support three 13-slot kiosk for mailbox. So a vehicle coming in will be able to pull off, pick up their mail, then continue around the loop and go back to their unit. In addition to amenities, again, we were, we initially proposed just a, just call it a generic amenity area. In this proposal, what we're looking at doing is having a fenced-in dog run area just off the overflow parking spaces at the back portion of this project. For wetlands approval, the only one real recommendation that they had, a couple of things, was number one, there was a request that the front portion of the property, which I'll, I'll mention for the wetlands approval, were making a robust landscaping plan. If you look at this area today, there's presently not a lot of vegetation to tumble down Brook, so we're actually going back and vegetating a 50-foot, 50-foot wide buffer, and also reestablishing a meadow, which is presently a maintained yard. In the back area, the southwest, we're doing a lot of wetlands mitigations, but ultimately, what we're also looking to do is areas I have highlighted in green are the areas that we're actually going to put in a conservation easement. So in total, between this green conservation easement at the front corner and the back southwest, we're looking at putting about five and a half acres into a conservation easement. In addition to, at the Wetlands Commission meeting, they asked us to make sure that we had some way of providing access from our development into that conservation easement we're proposing. What we committed to them is in the front section of the project to provide a pathway at this location. This first unit is 75 feet off the roadway, so we have ample area to create a path down along the edge of the detention basin, ultimately down into the open space area that we're providing in here. At the back, there's also a request to provide access to the stormwater management basin. Ultimately, there's a sanitary sewer line running down through here with an easement that will need to be maintained, so we are providing access to that sanitary sewer easement, ultimately to that detention basin also. One other thing that came up from this commission, actually wetlands, at the last meeting, we talked about the density of the overall development. I think it was Commissioner Hussein who had asked if we can do an overlay of our development, because I keep referring to this as wanting to be similar to the Still Mountain Estates. So with this plan, we provided this overlay to give you an idea of what the two look like, and I found it kind of interesting in actually going through this exercise. So up at the upper portion, outlined in yellow, is our proposed development. The dark green areas are the five and a half acres of conservation easement. You can see the road system coming off of Watkins and the 32 units around it. To the bottom, this area outlined in yellow is Still Mountain Estates. This is Still Mountain Road on the bottom section. When I started taking a look at it and really doing a comparison, what I, what I found was kind of interesting is the overall density based upon the actual development area. When you take a look at Still Mountain Estates, the overall property you're outlined in yellow was about 27 and a half acres. The areas that you see on this are wooded, are actually, were dedicated as conservation easements as part of that development for a total of about 15.15 acres. If you take a look at the way you had for an actual development area, it actually worked out to about 11.38. In this development, there's actually a total of both.
Like he froze him.
Jim, we've lost you.
Throws on the screen.
Jim, you're frozen on the screen.
I can hear you guys, but I think we lost him.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Sorry. I don't know what happened there. Where, where did I, did I start this over again? Where did I get cut off?
Yeah, you said what you found interesting was that material density.
Yeah, so, so in doing this analysis, what I found interesting is taking a look at the, the density based upon the actual development, developable area of each of these properties. So let's go over again. First, on the bottom, if I look at Still Mountain Estates, the area outlined in yellow on its plan consists of 27 and a half acres. The darker green areas are the areas of existing woods. They're ultimately were put into a conservation easement, which totaled about 15.15 acres. That left the development area where you see all the units and roadway systems of about 11.38 acres. In this development, there are 45 units, so based upon the development area of about 11.38 acres and 45 units, that puts an overall density of the development area about 3.9 units per developable acre. For our development up here, we are, have a total of 13.33 acres with a little over five acres going into a conservation easement. We're looking at a total of 13 units, which We're looking at a total of thirteen units, which with a development area left of about eight point one, which puts us to the density of about three point nine eight acres. So a little bit over, but very similar. So overall, the density is similar. The only other real difference between our development and their development is when you take a look at one of these units within Still Mountain Estates, you'll find the footprint area, including the two-car garage. Tends to be about twenty-four hundred square feet. Our footprint, including our garage, is about twenty-one hundred square feet, so overall, our, our, our footprint area is slightly smaller. Also, overall, the previous area is actually slightly smaller. But I, I think it was a good representation. It's, I always feel it's good to get an idea of what. In town is a good comparison, so that's why I kept on referring to Still Mountain Estates to give you an idea of what this density would look like. So the other thing I will finalize my presentation with is we did receive comments from your engineering staff late on Monday. We, I have gone through them, I'm still in the process of addressing them. I did not see anything major. A lot of them were just basically changing some orientation of text on the plans. And changing some wording of some items on the plans. The only one that I had originally any concern about was dealing with our sightline. As we exit from our development hall onto Watkins Road. We did field measure it initially, based upon the design speed, we need to provide a three hundred and ninety-foot line, three hundred and ninety feet of sightline as we look off to the west or to the left. Which field measured we do have. But we went back because when you do look at Watkins Road, there is a slight high, high point where my hand is here. So we actually went back yesterday morning, we did go back and we actually. Surveyed the whole profile of that roadway and actually built the sightline section. And per D O T specifications, D O T design mail for determining sightlines. What we need to do is measure from what we call a three and a half foot object height, so this is if you're sitting in a car in the driveway. To a three and a half foot object height. The bottom line represents the grade of the roadway, if I blow up on this. Bottom black line represents the grid of the roadway, the dash red line above represents the sightline. So you can see that although it does come up to high point, it never cuts through or obstructs the sightline. So not only horizontally but vertically, we feel we can easily achieve the three hundred and ninety-foot sightline. As required by the D O T design manual. We're glad to work with staff and continue to address any comments, but again, from what I've seen so far for engineering comments. There's nothing that would make any major changes for this proposed development. The only other thing I'll bring up is landscaping. We did submit as part of our application, what I'll say is a robust landscaping plan. As I previously mentioned, oops, sorry, one page back. Along Tumble Down Brook, we are planting a whole series of canopy trees and shrubs. In this area, we are proposing to increase the buffer from basically nothing today to a fifty-foot buffer. The stormwater management basins have a robust landscaping plan around the perimeter of them. That whole open lawn area is proposed to be converted back to a meadow to prove stormwater quality runoff as it flows down to Tumble Down Brook. We have several street trees along the entire inside perimeter of the roadway, along with per year zoning regulations, we're required to have a twenty-five-foot buffer. Around the perimeter of the development. We are showing that on the plan and it consists of a series of canopy trees and shrubs. Along both basically the northwesterly side and also down along the southeast of the side of the development. There are several trees right along the property lines we've identified on the plans as remaining. So we're going to preserve those and also the stormwater management basin plan in the back or basin on the back also has a robust landscaping plan. In total, we're looking at planting a hundred and thirty-five trees, a hundred and seventeen shrubs. And then for the wetlands or the detention basins, we have a hundred and twenty-five wetlands plants proposing to go into each one of those basins. So with that, I'm going to conclude my portion of the presentation and hopefully answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had. An extensive, I'm not going to go through them in complete detail. Comments on the, on the plans that we had. The applicant has addressed a number of them. Just for the, for your information, you probably know that the engineer's report is very different. And it's a new format that the town engineer has used in. In a previous. Locations and is going to be adopting here. It's much more detailed, but also much more informative. And that's the type of report you'll be receiving henceforth from Mr. Trotiere. In terms of our, our, our major concerns. One, and I think Jim neglected, but they, just for the record, the applicant has requested. That the commission waive the sidewalk requirement. And we do know that we did receive a comment from one of the neighbors that they were very excited about the possibility of a sidewalk. Being installed. When all is said and done, even though that is a recent addition to our regulations. In this particular location, we think the applicant has met two of the three. Then they only have to meet one of the conditions for waiving and. In this particular situation, staff would recommend that the commission waive the sidewalk requirement. We did have. Significant concerns about amenities and the lack thereof. I think and we, we had suggested that it lead to, in our conversations, that. That much more access provided to, to the conservation areas. The applicant has now indicated that will be provided and I, I think that that, that's a great addition. That's been recommended and both by the Wetlands Agent and Commission and agreed to by the, by the applicant. So that, that, that being concluded. We. Are concerned that. On the different thing, that there are no locations indicated for. The recycling garbage collection. Facilities, that is an issue in many developments that it just sort of is an afterthought, so we would. Ask that that be, be located and properly screened. On the development as to where they're going to show that. We are, remain concerned about screening and buffering. On the two areas that the applicant mentioned in their presentation. One being on the, particularly the two single-family properties that are on Watkins Road that abut this development. And likewise, the ones off of Overlook Road, Farm Road that abut the property. We think that more robust screening needs to be provided there. These, this development is very tight to the property line. It's basically at the minimum. And we think it's appropriate that those budding properties be provided sufficient screening. And we would suggest particularly for the two properties along Watkins Road, that there be a decorative fence. Added to the, to the buffering. To provide additional screening at that location. We're pleased that they have. Increased the spacing between the units. We still think it's tight, but we think they have gone a long way to, to, to addressing that. And the applicant is correct, the twenty-foot is, is, is a desirable one that staff has suggested to all developments. Over the, over the years, it is not a specific requirement. And they have done in many cases achieve that. And as, as the applicant indicated in those cases. Where it is less than that, it is really on a point-to-point as opposed to the entire unit. Staff, it still would prefer, but we are not making it a condition of our recommendation, but. We would still prefer that unit number one, which is the first unit coming in from Watkins Road on the right. Be removed. We think that it would make it a much more compatible to, to this, to the adjacent, adjacent. Single-family development in terms of setback and, and development. There are, as the applicant indicated, still some ongoing conversations between the applicant and the town engineer. And they are scheduled as soon as early next week to be out on site to deal with the sightline issue. That was a request made by the town engineer, so that does not remain totally resolved, but I think they're, they're close to it. I think that basically summarizes, I think so in summary. I think the staff is. Much more. Comfortable with where they have come from the master plan approval to the site plan presentation. And have addressed most of our concerns. We would recommend that and have suggested in the approval resolution that the commissioner. Incorporate the staff recommendations, some of which have already been achieved, but I think they need to be put on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I just want to go over the procedures and how we proceed with our public hearings. We first hear a presentation from the applicant. We then get comments from our director. We then take questions from the audience. We do questions from the commission. We'll do comments from the audience, then we'll take comments from the commission. And then the applicant will have one last chance to make any closing remarks. With that said, is there any questions from anyone in the audience? Just come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Evan Fable. Thank you for having me.
Your address, please.
Nine Watkins Road. Questions, right?
Yes.
Thank you. With the increase of traffic on Watkins Road. What are some measures you guys will take to create a safer? Space on both sides of Watkins?
Jim? You, you want to have them ask all the questions first, or do you want to respond from one, one by one?
One at a time, please.
Okay, so for our site driveway, there presently, as you exit the site drive. There is, off to the east, there is a large tree and a mound at that tree. We're going to be recreating that area to make sure we have adequate sightline distance to the intersection of Simsbury Road and Watkins. Otherwise, you know, again, we're going to meet town staff out there and we're going to take a look along Watkins Road. See if there's any vegetation that would obstruct sightlines that would need to be trimmed back. But our key is to obviously keep that sightline as open as we can to make sure we have safe access to Watkins Road.
Thank you. I have another question. So when you take a right out of your development and you go down to Simsbury Road. There's currently just a stop sign. Are there discussions about maybe stoppage light, blinking yellow?
There's no discussion. I mean, ultimately, that would be up to D O T, that is the state highway. As to whether they would want a traffic light there, but I could tell you based upon the traffic volumes that would be associated with this development. It would unfortunately not warrant a traffic signal at that intersection.
Thank you.
Let me just interject for a minute. I want to make sure that, that you understand the procedure there.
Yeah.
You know, that there are counts and traffic's done that's run, then reviewed by the, by the state D O T. And they make the determination of whether or not additional traffic control measures would be required at that intersection. They have made the determination that they are not.
I'll come back up for comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from anyone in the audience? Please, podium, state your name and address.
Yes, Robert Dickinson, four hundred Seaberry Drive in Bloomfield. My question is. Are either a sidewalk or wider path going to be installed along Watkins Road?
We are not proposing a sidewalk along Watkins Road. We did submit a waiver request for sidewalks. I think one of the big issue is. There's no sidewalks in the areas. There's nothing for it to connect to, unfortunately. I am always the big proponent of sidewalks, but I'm never a proponent of sidewalks. When it creates an unsafe situation and doesn't have any interconnection with other sidewalks and forces somebody to actually step out into the roadway once they see the sidewalks. So we are not proposing any sidewalks and we have requested a waiver.
Thank you. With no further questions from the audience, we'll start with the commission. Commissioner? Sure.
Evan Fable, nine Watkins Road. Thanks for having me back up. A question for you guys. Do you have a plan for snow removal or if there were to be a big storm? Where that would go?
Sure, so this is set up like a regular residential subdivision where you have a road system and individual driveways. It would be plowed like a regular town road where the, the snow would be piled off to the side of the road. Each individual driveway would be shoveled with the snow accumulated for that driveway put off to the side of the driveways. You'll see we don't have any large parking lots where we have to pile mass pavement areas and stockpile snow along the edge of it. Everything is set up like a typical, a single-family residential road system where it would be handled by just regular plowing. There's no need for any large snow storage areas as part of this development.
Thank you. Could I ask another, another question? Is there a lights, streetlights plan?
There are streetlights. We did submit a photometrics plan as part of our development, or part of our development package. Streetlights would all be associated along the edge of the roadway. There are no lights along the back of the units. So we're having any impact on adjoining properties. All light concentration would be towards the roadway in the front of the houses.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, can you bring them in?
Hello, good evening. My name is Adrian Miles and I'm at nine Overbrook Farm Road, Bloomfield. Just want to make sure everyone can hear me well.
Yes.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a couple of questions and Jim, once again, thank you for your presentation. And I know that you look forward to doing this project here and, you know, as proposed, but I have some questions for you. One of my questions is, have you given any considerations to the. The neighboring properties or the budding properties with regards to water runoff, with regards to noise? And with regards to even the appearance on the back of those properties? So it's, you know, have you given, that's, that's one of my first questions. I'll ask all, ask three of them now and then you can probably jump in after that. My second question is with regards to the sewer being. Talked about with coming in from the end of Overbrook, from the other development and coming, entering your property from that direction. Have you taken a closer look at even the size of that sewer line? Because that sewer line in the beginning, I don't believe was even proposed for any extension. So have you given any, any serious consideration of, of the feasibility of that sewer line being able to? Be used or even if you expand it, if it's even going to work for the amount of properties that you're, you're putting in, in this small development area? That's my second question. My next question is with regards to the density, I know we talked about Still Mountain Estates a lot with. I know we talked about still mountain estates a lot within the comparison of the two. But when you do the comparison on both, when you subtract the conservation properties from your your property, your conservation amount of space, when you subtract the wetlands, and then you really compare the the actual space that you can develop to the space that was developed in Still Mountains, I think that that within the density structure of what you're proposing is still way more than than what your comparing, you know, to Still Mountain, I still believe that that the property, the amount of properties that you're proposing to put into that space is still way too many for the particular space that is going into, even with consideration that is is dumping onto Watkins Road into a small street. So that would be my third question to you, Jim.
Okay, thank you for the questions. We'll start with stormwater runoff. Yes, we did take into consideration the adjoining pieces of the property. As I mentioned previously, we are proposing two stormwater management areas. One up at the front northwesterly corner. All the stormwater management areas that we have designed have been designed in two part. First, the purpose is to, number one, take the stormwater coming off paved areas and roof areas and actually treat it to remove pollutants that tend to accumulate what we call the first flush, the first 1.3 inches of runoff from the paved areas. In addition to, this basin is designed to attenuate any peak flows. So when it drains out to Tumblebrook, it has no increase in flow onto Tumblebrook ultimately, which continues on to the properties south. We prepared an extensive stormwater management report that has been reviewed by your engineering department. And basically received a positive review of that report that we prepared. But we've demonstrated that we do not have any increases in flow post-development. All the stormwater management that we've designed is actually originally was designed for what we call the 2004 Connecticut DEP Stormwater Quality Manual. That manual is just actually recently updated, the beginning of this year, a new manual with the date of was went to effect of March 2024. We actually went back all through the requirements of the new manual and actually updated it. So this whole stormwater management system has been designed in accordance with the latest requirements of the state of Connecticut. The basin itself is designed to attenuate peak flows anywhere from a one-year up to a 100-year storm event. So we have taken considerable consideration about stormwater runoff from this development. You also mentioned noise. This is a like use development to the adjoining properties. It's residential residential. And so the noise generated by residences is typically low. Obviously, if there's issues with with people making too much noise, then there could be a request put in or a complaint put in to ensure that they keep the noise down, but similar. It should be, it'd be the same thing for people on Overbrook Farm or any adjoining property. They respect your neighbor and, you know, keep your noise level down. But it's not in a a commercial use or a high intensity use that would generate a noise. It's a like to like use. Sewer capacity. As they develop Still Mountain Estates, the MDC who handles sewer in this area required them to actually extend the manhole up to the northerly property line. That line is an eight-inch line that goes through the whole development and ultimately out to Still Mountain Road. We're proposing to tie into that line. Eight inches typically has more than enough capacity to handle a development of this magnitude and all the houses that are on presently on Overbrook Farm Road. At the end of the day, after we receive approval here, we actually need to go to the MDC as part of their approval for the extension of the sanitary sewer lines. They will make a determination as to whether they feel their system has adequate capacity. If it doesn't, they will require us to make improvements to it. But based on my many, many years of experience in doing this, that extension of the eight-inch main that they already have in place will have adequate capacity and I have run numbers on it and eight-inch line would have capacity for 32-unit development such as this. Density. You talked about density of Still Mountain Estates. If I understand you correctly, what you were asking is if I take the overall property of Still Mountain Estates and I take in consideration all the wetlands on that property and deduct that and take a look at the diversity of what they had left for property, that we're not looking at basically apples to apples with our development compared to their development. The explanation I gave does exactly that, where I took a look at the overall property area, deducted the open space area, which is the area actually of wetlands and detention basins that was on their property. In comparison to our property, deducting the conservation area easements we're proposing, and took a look at the overall density. When I go through that exercise, I find the density of the actual development area being very similar. They're both about 3.9 units per developable acre, non-conservation, non-wetlands area. So they're very similar in both applications. So I hope that answers your questions and I'm glad you take any more that you may have.
Jim, I just need one. I have one clarification from your answer and then I have two smaller questions. The clarification is you did speak about something pertaining to the sewer line and Overbrook Farm Road as in tying in. I'm not, I didn't, I didn't hear that. I didn't understand that part correctly, exactly.
Yeah, so ultimately, let me get to the utility plan. The orange line on this plan is the backside of Still Mountain Estates. We need to extend a gravity sewer line from here all the way through Overbrook Farm Road and then into the back of our project. As we do that, there's going to be a manhole put in Overbrook Farm Road. Ultimately, if there's issues with sewers or septic systems on houses along Overbrook Farm, there's some potential. If need be, that's, you know, people along Overbrook Farm or the MDC, if there's a request put in, could extend a gravity sewer to provide gravity sewers in Overbrook Farm Road. But it's just getting getting these properties closer to the potential for having gravity sewers if if ever were need be.
Okay. My next question is, have you done any projections, like a 10, 15, or 20-year projection with regards to the growth and overall look of all of the different vegetation, trees, everything that's being planted? Have you done a projection to see what that's going to look like in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? I'm sure you know, some of these trees could be humongous after a period of time. In the beginning, they're little small trees and they're cute. But have you done some projections so we can at least have an idea, okay, in 10 years, this is what the development could potentially look like? That is one question and I kind of lost my last question, but I'll just pass for now. I'll probably include it in the comments later.
Not on protection of how how much these trees will grow in that period of time. I could, I could take a look at them and I can come up, you know, researching them to give you an idea as to at a 10 or 15-year period, what is the projected growth of those trees? So you get a better idea what height would be.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll start with the commission. And I'll start online with Commissioner Blint and then Commissioner Hussein. Any questions?
Stop sharing.
Will you stop sharing?
It's for now.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Blint?
I think we may have lost her.
Okay, Commissioner Hussein.
Yes, you didn't lose me. Sorry, Jim.
No, no, we asked Commissioner Commissioner Blint.
Yeah, that's fine. No, thanks for making the changes as compared to the last meeting. Obviously, you've got the wetlands approval, so now we have, we're moving in the right direction at least. Questions I had, actually, let me start with John. Excuse me one second. Sorry. So John, do you anticipate us having the applicant address the the town engineers' comments for us before approval or we can approve pending those? That's the first question I had.
I would think you could make in your approval a condition that, you know, that they address all the town engineers and that that he's, that he sign off on it. I would not, I don't think it's necessary to hold up. There's just one outstanding item, I believe. And so I think that you could act on it with that one outstanding item out there as long as it's reflected in the approval.
Okay, great. All right, Jim, one quick thing. I understand that you added the dog, the dog area, I guess, in that thing. Now, I know not everyone has dogs, but also not everyone has children, but is there any consideration of adding a playscape, a small playscape for kids?
So initially, we just identified an amenity area, just generic amenity area, whether it's a community garden or a playscape or or, you know, a dog park area. In working with the developer on this and, you know, I think Steve Tempkin's in the audience with you this evening from Robeth Court LLC. And maybe he can expand on this a little bit, but the idea was, you know, once we develop a community here, we have a better idea of what the demographics of the community are going to be. Go out to them and see what kind of amenity area they actually want. Maybe no one has dogs and they don't want a dog park or maybe they're gonna, they have someplace to go to. Maybe people are more into community gardening and they want a small community garden in this area. That's why we tried to be a little bit more generic and we're going to work with the community that we're creating here. But I'm sure the applicant, if he's there, could, you know, commit to, you know, providing some additional amenity area, but I think we need to be a little bit flexible and see what ultimately the demographics going to look like on this community.
Okay, if that's the case, then I'd probably make it a generic area and probably not, you know, make it specifically a dog, I think, dog. What did, what did you call it? A dog area, a dog scape area, believe?
A dog run area. So typically we do in a lot of like multifamily developments is we'll put in like two fenced areas, one for large dogs, one for smaller dogs. Someplace where you can, you know, it's secure, try to keep it away from the unit as far as we can.
No, that's fine. What I'm saying is that if you're not sure if it's going to be a dog scape area, maybe show it as a generic.
That's what we initially, that's what we initially had done. And there was requests, we'd be a little more specific.
Okay, all right. But I then I would say still consider the opportunity for creating a kid's, kid's playscape or something area for or even like you said, a community garden or something like that. So.
Yep.
If you pull up back the the plan you had originally and you talk about the two pathways for the conservation easement, what are you thinking about those pathways? Is it crushed stone, just a, just a grass pathway? What do you?
Either, either stone dust or wood chips.
But it'll still be pervious, correct?
What's that?
It'll still be pervious?
Correct.
Okay, right. It's not going to be impervious or anything like that. You're not creating any runoff or anything.
Not a pave, no, it's not a paved walkway. It's just something to protect the earth so it doesn't become a, you know, a bare earth path and.
Okay, and again, coming back to the house number one that Jonathan referenced, pull it back the screen and you have in that area again. I do apologize. In my boss, yeah.
Pull it up or blow it up?
You can just pull it up again, the screen that you have for the.
You talking about the landscaping plan?
The landscaping plan for the front part of that.
Sure.
For the entrance again. I just wanted to see again if there's adequate screen in there for.
So we had screened along the back side of that unit?
I don't see, you're not sharing your screen, I don't think.
I'm sorry. I forgot to share my screen. Sorry. So this is our landscaping plan. So we have a series of trees and evergreens along the backside of this. We have street trees along the front. This is something I had brought up with the applicant. Again, I keep comparing to Still Mountain Estates. Then the one thing I brought up is, you know, if I look at the units of Still Mountain Estates, we're actually further back from the edge of the road. But the one thing I did like about Still Mountain Estates is in this front section, they do have a cluster of evergreens between the unit and the roadway and that could be a good idea on both sides of this. As long as they're not obstructing sightline, they need to be about 15 feet back from the edge of the roadway.
Yeah, I think we probably need to put that in there, create a light buffer there and also would also create the safety for the sightlines for the drivers, correct?
As long as, as long as the edges are about 15 feet back and, you know, they would not obstruct sightline.
Right, so I think we probably need to look at some sort of screening there there too, because I don't like how it's just open like that. And then if we are, because I don't think at this point the applicant is going to remove that one property, even though it's a staff recommendation, we can keep it in there, but in the event that you can't, then maybe put some buffer out there to help screen that stuff, that area there a little bit at least.
Sure. Steve, if you're honest, could you just nod your head if you're okay? Steve, are you there?
Sorry, can't hear him, so.
Steve, can you go up to the podium and just confirm you're okay with that?
And just identify your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Steve Tempkin. I'm with Robeth Court LLC and also T and M Building Company out of Torington. And I was just questioning a little, you know, if the commission feels that strongly on a PLR zone that people shouldn't be able to see the houses. I didn't think it was such a big deal, you know, that if you drove by, I mean, these are going to be pretty, well, I'm biased, but I'm thinking they're going to be nice looking houses and, you know, if somebody happens to be able to see them, is that a really a big problem, you know? Talk about putting fences up so nobody sees the back of the houses and putting trees up so nobody sees the sides of the houses and I just didn't know if the commission felt that was necessary, if that's part of what a PLR zone is supposed to be, that you're supposed to isolate from other neighbors?
No, I don't think it says trees. I think, I think Jimmy mentioned shrubs or something, something that it's partially screed. You're not going to cover the entire.
Yeah, not, not, not a total barrier, but maybe a little, a little street tree or some kind of hands, yeah.
Correct. Are you good with that, Steve? So we can move on?
Did you see those before or after that walking trail that we have going? You know, to get you, I thought you wanted one between the street and that first house.
It'd probably be before it. So if I so I think we're talking in, in here? In something in here? Can you see?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking to, correct.
Okay, I'm good with that.
All right. The other thing we really didn't touch on is, and I think you had some sheets on it, but I'd like for you to spend some time talking a bit more about the house types, the designs, the materials and stuff like that.
So we have, as part of the package, sorry. Got a lot of sheets open here. Let me get to the right one. So the, we actually have four or sorry, five different footprints in total. Ultimately, we're looking at a combination of one-story structure with two-car garage on the front. We're looking at a bumped out section for the, for the bedrooms with a recessed front entry door. Using the same footprint, we also have an option of a two-story structure with some bedrooms up. Materials are going to be, sorry, double hung windows with mullions dividing the windows and also an architectural grade garage door. We're looking at a vinyl siding in a variety of different colors, neutral tone colors. And then an element of some type of other siding, like a vertical vinyl siding in the upper gables of these roof. Roof shingles would be architectural grade roofing shingles. Steve, do you want to expand a little bit more on the architectural design or materials that you typically use for your developments?
We do strive to make them, you know, very low maintenance exteriors because so we don't, people aren't going to have to like re, they'd have to, in this case, the front door would be really the big item to have to paint, but the, most of the house is going to be quite, you know, low maintenance for them. So it helps keep the lookups because the windows would be vinyl windows that would be prefinished, so you wouldn't have to worry about repainting your windows. And just hoping, you know, it would be something that'll, the appearance will be kept up. Even if the homeowner really doesn't have to put much effort into keeping, maintaining his house, not like if he had a wood house or something like that, where he'd have a lot of maybe upkeep to keep the look going. We're also looking, you know, we're showing you a couple typical designs here, but we're going to offer a choice of elevations. We don't want it to look like a total cookie cutter neighborhood.
Yeah, I would think would probably a condition of approval as we get to that point is that you're going to have to come back to the town or come back and work with staff Yeah, I would, I would think would probably a condition of approval as we get to that point is that you're gonna have to come back to the town or come back and work with staff to, to, to um, put materials and design on look and so forth, because again, you don't have anything other than some sketches right now, so that's all I have for now, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, uh, we'll start at this end of the room with Commissioner James, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, Kevin got into some of the questions I was gonna ask about the units themselves. Um, can you please share with us um, kind of how much you think these units would be listed for?
Well, it's gonna depend, I mean, I think you might have a architectural sheet in the, in your package there?
Mm-hmm.
With the five different house types, so, and they'd be available in one and two-bedroom, one and two-story design, so the the way we're doing the plan with these footprints, we could go either way, one or two, the, the one stories would sell for less than the two, even though they would probably be more expensive per square foot. It's like a good value for people to get the second floor, but if they feel they just don't need it, you know, they might stay with the one, um. So it's, I mean, we're still figuring things out a little, you know, but we're thinking maybe five hundreds to eight hundreds is like a range we're looking at right now for houses, depending on what people have, I mean, if you look at the plan and you get to that grand plus, you can see there the, like, we have an option to have a bathtub in your uh, master bath if you want, there's a little bump out, and you can make your garage twenty-two feet instead of twenty. You can bump out your kitchen two feet if you see that option. And the other thing we do have the opportunity to do, and we'll see where the market takes us, is currently, we're showing the second floor being concentrated just on the front of the unit, which would give us a chance to have tray ceilings, say, in the first-floor bedroom and cathedral ceiling or something if somebody wanted in their living room. But if we had a customer come along who really wanted a lot of square footage, we could actually extend the unit further back on that second floor. It's also a possibility of finished basements, you know, if the market wanted that, we are planning to have all full basements, so if a customer said, could you finish my basement, that's something we would certainly entertain.
Yeah, um, as, as Kevin requested, just, um, there is in this site plan notes about building floor plans on A dash one, A dash two, A dash three that are not in this document, so if we could get an updated document with that, that would be very helpful, because we couldn't tell that from this architectural plan that there's um, a basement. Um, I think that's context that we're missing, um. I was gonna ask.
I guess we're showing the stairs going down to the basement, or do you like this, see, just you know, because we don't know if people are gonna finish it, so it'd just be the shape of the first floor, kind of, with.
Sure, um. Um, that's my only question for now, I had something else, but it slipped my mind.
Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and quite a few of my questions were answered with presentation and so forth, um. Uh, a few things, though, um, first, um, Mr. Planner, do you? Um, I read the wetlands report, and it notes that conservation areas can either be easements or restrictions. Do we have a prefer, I mean, what, what actually, I plead ignorance, I don't know exactly what the difference between those is, and do we have a preference?
I think we'd want as, as strong a protection as we can get, so that's the conservation easement, that's what we'll request, that'd be filed on the land records.
Okay, so the easement is the, is the stronger, okay, I just didn't completely understand what our choices were there, um. The, the, let's just talk, uh, then this probably go back to, well, I'll ask you a question real quick since you're up here on the plans. Um, do the garages stick out, or are the garages just uh, it looks like, you know, it's a flat drawing of the front of the house? And you have the door and then the garage, but do the garages actually come out, or these?
If you, um, you look at that floor plan, you, there's those couple units in the corner where the wetlands had us move them up, so those are now only gonna be one-bedroom on the first floor. But the others actually have a bedroom, that second first-floor bedroom is extending closer to the road than the garage.
Okay.
Then, sort of, there'll be a lot of in and out, kind of.
But these are, these are, you know, sometimes you see what are called stout houses where the garage extends much further, and that, that's not what you have here.
No, so. This front bedroom will actually be the.
The front bedroom, right, but not the, not the.
Yeah, right.
So I've got the site plan blown up, so you can see where the driveway is coming in, in particular, like unit number twenty-five here. Um, so the uh, the area, this little bump in the area is going to be recessed for the front door. Uh, and this is the bedroom that Steve's referring to, it's actually extends out a little beyond, so there's, there's attenuation in the front face of the building, it's not a flat front face, uh, but the garage is not sticking out.
The garage, yeah, okay. Great, thank you, so I, I think most of these probably go back to you, uh, Mr. Cassidy. On the sidewalks, um, and we'll probably talk about that a little more in comments, um, I do understand the reasoning here, um. But let me just ask, if you, if you did consider putting a sidewalk, are we talking about a sidewalk along Watkins Road? That's what we would be talking about, the, your property along Watkins Road, is that correct?
Y- yes.
Are both Watkins and Simsbury Road? I mean, that's funny.
I think it'd belong both Watkins and Simsbury Road.
But Watkins, so, so Simsbury Road is the area where we have the water course?
You have the water course, yes, and no sidewalks in the area.
Okay, um. And what, uh, ignoring the reasons you've given the, the waiver, which again, I understand, and I, I realize this is a area for discussion, um, what do you think the, you know, what do you think the, you know, would the cost be exorbitant for this, and sort of what do you think the effect of the traffic calming that we've, you know, there were questions about safety and traffic calming essentially on Watkins Road, what do you think the effect of having a sidewalk would be?
Well, again, then my, my biggest concern, the effect is where do you go to? Um, you're looking at about three hundred and forty feet of sidewalks along Watkins Road that goes nowhere. Um, for traffic calming, um, I don't really see it doing a, a, any positive or negative for traffic calming. That area along Watkins Road will be maintained uh, as an open lawn to not obstruct sightlines. Um, I, I, again, let me, let me, let me bring this, let me talk to you on a more personal note, my issue why I always, why I always um, either am for or not for sidewalks. Uh, as I mentioned, um, these sidewalks aren't going anywhere, so I'm gonna tell you a, a little story, a personal story. Um, actually, back in two thousand and one, November of two thousand and one, um, I had a situation um, where my mother-in-law uh, was walking down a section of sidewalks in Plano, Connecticut. Sidewalks ended, unfortunately, she stepped out to the, into the road, cause the end of the sidewalks was hit by a car and killed. Um, so I, I am all for sidewalks where it makes connections and it's meaningful. Um, I'm not for putting a section of sidewalks uh, where it's most likely never gonna be connected to anything else. It forces somebody into that dangerous situation. Uh, especially along Simsbury Road, um, you know, I don't, I don't see anybody, um, you know, ever, ever being able to walk on sidewalks and, and long, say, highway like that. This thing is a, a dangerous situation. Uh, again, I'm, I'm all for sidewalks and where, where it makes a safe situation, but um, not here. It just, I know, I, I'm not seeing where it helps the situation.
Okay, thank you, um, let's see, uh, I really like the two trails um, that you, you're talking about. Um, I did have a question about the one in the southern part of the uh, uh, well, I guess, actually, it's the eastern part of the property, because this is turned uh, west. Um, but the, the orange one down at the bottom for the conservation area down the wetlands here, um. If, if I look at the, the plans, I think your property essentially ends at the road, Overbrook Farm Road, is that correct, at the circle there?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, and on the front of the plans, when it shows the site, it looks like there is a rectangular area extending on down, I guess, to Still Mountain Estates. Is that the sewer connection or?
That's a sewer easement, yeah, that's what the easement.
So that's a sewer easement, so that's, that, that's only on the site plan because of the sewer easement?
Correct.
Okay, good, cause my question was, um, you know, to make connectivity, to make walking, to make everything as robust as possible, um, could this be connected to Still Mountain Estates or to, you know, to the border of it, obviously, it's their decision whether they uh, connect through your trail, um, is that possible along the sewer line easement?
So, I mean, it is dedicated to the, it's a dedicated easement to the MDC for the purposes of source. Um, it doesn't have any specific language, it says you can use it for access um, from Overbrook Farms uh, to Still Mountain Estates, um, so I can't, I can't commit to doing that. Uh, ultimately, it's going to be a path that would have to be maintained once the sewer line is over it, uh, so it will be open. Um, but it is an easement over, you know, over private property, it's over uh, twenty over Brook Farm Road. Uh, and the language is specifically for uh, purposes of sanitary sewer easement. So again, I can't commit to uh, being able to providing access to Still Mountain Estates. Um, but I, I guess if someone wants to sneak through it, they possibly could, but I, I can't promote it.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand, I, I understand your point, I'm, I'm, I was just looking at the map and trying to understand. I think it may give the property owner of twenty over Brook Estates on one of the, one of these maps, um. But anyway, okay, um. So, um, the trees, there was a comment about the, the buffer along the, you know, with the house that um, is mentioned in the manager's, or in the planner's report, uh, moving. When I look at the map of that part, you have two large trees there that you evidently are going to take out. One of them, I think, is very close to the house, obviously. Am I interpreting that correctly?
No, if they're shown on the plan, they were trees we were trying to preserve.
Okay, because they have X's there, and I thought that was.
Okay, you're, you're looking at the site demolition plan, then, the uh?
Um, that could be, yes, that, well, no, I'm, I'm looking, actually, I'm looking at the planting plan. Uh, the uh, two-point, sheet two-point-six-one?
Yeah.
Which has the plantings on it?
No, these are proposed trees that are being planted in that area? If you're looking at the one AR and the one, one AG.
But look at, look up at house one.
Yes, so these are, these two are being removed, correct?
Yes, these two, yeah, so, um. Just in terms of, and, and I do understand, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot, Steve, was that you?
Yes.
Steve, I, I do, I do understand your point, I mean, it's not like we should have the impression that looking at a nice house is a bad thing, you know, we don't always have to look at nature, per se. Um, but it does seem like going along with the uh, staff comment of being able to move that house a little further away from the road could at least possibly save the tree that's furthest to the east there, the the one at the top, I think the other one's probably too close. Um, do any comment on that?
One thing, Mr. Cassidy, I think, had ta- talked about when he was designing this was, was just he was comparing it to the distance to that first house on Watkins. The, you know, we're, I think, maybe further from Watkins than that house.
Oh, from the one, yeah, to the others.
Right, right here, so we're actually further back than the house, uh.
Right, I, I, I'm, I'm not so much the competition between, between the, the properties as much as like, the, the, there's been a comment about moving this, this house positioned slightly back, and we're also talking about a buffer, well, we have it, we have a, a fairly large tree that's there now, so, um. That, that, that's just something to think about.
So I, I kinda like, uh, it's Commissioner Stain's uh, comment about maybe planting some additional buffering in that area. Um, I think it, um, you know, that's something that is possible. Um, again, if we do a comparison to Still Mountain Estates, let me just get, get something up here. Just to kinda show everybody what we are talking about, if you can give me one second here. Um. Uh, let's see, if I can pull this up, no. I just wanna give, to give you an idea, uh, as a comparison as to, um, uh, what it looks like, so if you could just give me a, a picture for one second here, um. Let's see. So I think we're looking at something. Okay. So this is the front of Still Mountain Estates, um, so again, as I represented, uh, these, these houses are actually a little bit closer um, to the road than we are, um, but you could see with some attractive additional landscaping. Uh, you still get some view of the houses, um, but you do get some buffering. Uh, I think, um, you know, in, to compensate for those two trees, we do need to cut, uh, I think this would be a, a decent measure uh, to put in to offer that, that buffering. But you can see it's very similar to what we're looking to do for the front of our project.
Okay. Thank you for that, um, one other question about trees coming down, in the amenity area, when I looked at the demolition plan and the trees that were coming out and um, the amenity area, it appeared that there were two fairly large trees that is currently are in what would be the amenity area. Especially since you don't know exactly what's going there, is there a reason? You know, one of them, again, might be a little close to the back of one of the houses, I'm not sure. Um, have you, have you looked at that, right?
I, I could, I could take another look at it and see if there's some way to say that I, I'm, my guess is probably not, um, cause we do need to take that grade down in the center a little bit. Um, so I think it would be damaged, I only took a look at once, we could say that we're not gonna have an impact on the root structure. Uh, they tend to be around the perimeter of the development.
Okay, uh, please take a look at that again, because um, there, there did seem to be two trees that when I sort of overlaid this.
I think you're talking about in this area right here.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. And when, when I overlay that on the amenity area, it's like, you know, very close, maybe things could be rearranged a little and save those trees.
Yeah, we can, we could work with staff on something like that.
Um, two other quick questions, um, what, what is the overall number of trees you think are gonna be taken down, you, you talked about planting a hundred and thirty-five?
Um, there's a, it's a total of about forty trees that are coming down.
Oh, okay.
We actually went out and we actually, uh, we, we, per year regulations, we actually surveyed, uh, what's classified as significant tree, which is basically fourteen inches in diameter, average breast height. Uh, so we actually, um, we actually surveyed those, located them and identified them on the plan. Uh, but I think when I last counted, I was at about forty in total, and we're planting on a hundred and twenty-five back.
Good, good, um, and, and again, you, you know, hopefully, we'll look at those two, the two we just identified, I think those potentially could be, uh, could be saved. Um, one final question about trees, um, I looked at your planning list, and the one question I had is, um, you're planting Serbian spruce, or not Serbian spruce, you are planting Serbian spruce, you're planting Canadian hemlock? Um, at this point, are, you know, what is, is there any problem with planting hemlocks with the adalgia?
So I'm gonna admit, I'm, I'm not a landscape architect, I had my landscape architect prepare this, uh, who's Mary Blackburn. Um, I can talk to her, uh, and see if there's any issues or any diseases I need to be concerned about with it, this particular type of tree, the Canadian hemlock. Uh, and if there is, then uh, we can obviously substitute it for a more appropriate tree. Uh, but that's the first thing I'm, I'm hearing of, of that issue.
No, no, we, I mean, I love hemlocks and the state has been fortunate, because when we got the outbreak of the woolly adalgia, probably fifteen, twenty years ago, we had a couple of cold winters and it killed a lot of them off, so we're still battling it, but it's not doing that much harm, I just wonder if it's worthwhile planting young trees in that environment, but um, you know, hemlocks are great trees. Um, I think that's all I have, um, I have a couple of comments, when we get to comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peters?
Actually, I have a question for Jonathan, um, it's regarding the sidewalks, um. The, the third clause, um, it just seems like, it's like a, an easy way out to, to submit for this waiver to not provide sidewalks, especially at a new development where there is nothing, and it this, it literally says, in the judgment of the commission, a sidewalk slash path would serve no public benefit at this site. And the, the, from what I understand, the public benefit would be connectivity and safety, and it doesn't exist right now, cause there are no sidewalks. So it kinda leads, leans into the fact that they don't need to provide a sidewalk. Um, so I guess my question for this is, when do we as a town step in to actually provide sidewalks, once these developments start to occur? Cause they're, they're popping up everywhere, and I've been, I feel like I, we've been in a couple of hearings where this waiver has come up and we're, we're obviously waiving it for this purpose. and we're, we're obviously waiving it for this purpose. But we've also heard an appeal to CD that we, we need to start creating connections between different networks or different communities. And if we keep waiving this, those networks will never occur. So when do we step in?
That's a question that's, that's somewhat difficult to answer. I think in this particular case, I think we, particularly because Simsbury Road is one of the abutting properties, that being a state highway. And that future development along there is, is probably going to be, that, that, at that end, there would be no, you know, realistic expectation that there would be additional sidewalks provided, certainly in the near term, if not the midterm. I think we would, we would need to require, you know, certainly sidewalks in, in town center developments and in probably, again, a relative term, a more dense urban setting where there are not sidewalks as a start. I recognize the conundrum we've put ourselves in because this is a recently adopted regulation and provision. And now we find ourselves, at least in this particular instance, where it may not be particularly appropriate. And so, you know, we, staff's balance on this one was this was probably not the place to start for this development. That's not to say that we don't agree with the commission, that it ought, that it's a very, that it's essential. But particularly where there may already be some sidewalks where we're completing the connection or we have an expectation that it's in an area where sidewalks are going to be improved as part of overall development in the area. Not sure that gives you a clear answer, because we don't have a cut and dry answer.
Okay, thank you for that. And I do have another question for you, just for clarification on the buffer for the front homes. Is there a reason for the buffer that you guys are, one insisted, that you're suggesting? Is it because we're trying to hide the homes? Or is it because we want to create a more sense of privacy for that, that house that may be the closest to that street?
The latter.
Okay, thank you. That's what I, that's what I was believing, to be honest. I just wanted to ask that because I, I heard that from, from the applicants that we thought the homes were ugly, which I don't agree with. So I just wanted to clarify that. But I will go back to the, the homes. You said, what type of materials did you say you were gonna possibly provide as alternates?
When I was talking about alternates, it's more different facades.
Yeah, like, I believe this is probably just vinyl siding. So you're maybe like, like a split face brick or something like that. I don't know. What do you?
Probably, but I'm also thinking like different window configurations, things like that, just so it doesn't look like the same house over and over again, you know?
Yeah, no, I understand.
And it's a for sale product, so we're gonna somewhat go with market demand. And if a customer came to us and said, I want certain thing, we would certainly consider their wishes, you know?
Yeah, understood. I think, yeah, that'll, that'll conclude my, my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peters. Commissioner Millet.
My questions are generally around the staff recommendations and their memo and whether the applicant would be amenable to those being conditions. And I'll just list them, specifically the ones I, I'd like to see as well. One would be the designated garbage recycling.
You could just mention about that, that the plan is to have individual house pickups, you know, with your own. It's not a, we're not thing of a dumpster on this job at all.
I, I understand. I, I think they're, and maybe I'll direct the question now specifically to the planner on, on what they intended. I would think it's when, you know, the, the bins maybe might be during the week when it's not for pickup?
No, it was unclear to us whether there was going to be a central collection or individual collection. If there's going to be individual unit collection, we would support that. Our concern was if there was going to be a common collection, that that should be designated and screened.
Okay, so that answers my question on that. Thank you. The screening in comment H, where we would want extra, I would think specifically is, this is in regarding to the neighbors on Overbrook or?
Both the neighbors on Overbrook and the neighbors on Watkins.
Okay. So that would be something I would want to include. I.
How do you feel about the landscape plan? I mean, does that show enough screening or?
We did not feel that the landscape plan provided sufficient screening for those, for those properties because of the very close proximity of the rear of these buildings and the rear decks to the property line and thus to those properties. That additional screening, even and up to including decorative fencing, would be much more appropriate.
Jim, would you mind just putting the landscape plan up on the screen for everybody?
So along Overbrook, the larger circles are going to be canopy trees. And then the smaller ones are going to be evergreens planted along, along Overbrook Farm. Similarly, over here, where we brought up to Watkins. So we have, you know, a total of seven canopy trees. And then in between them, we have a series of evergreens. I don't know how much denser we can go and realistically have these trees grow to maturity. But we, we can work with staff on that one. I would say as, as a condition of approval. But, you know, we, we thought it was adequate screening and being able to let it to grow appropriately.
Yeah, I would understand the, the growth period just from a, you know, some shorter time, mid-time period, that there'd be some maturing and, and the screening would actually take effect and, and having that. Is it a mix of evergreen?
It's a mix of evergreen and deciduous.
Okay. So I, I would definitely want to see, you know, to, to the staff satisfaction that, that the screening is, is dense as we would like it to be. Specifically from the neighbors, that I, I would echo the Commissioner Hussein's discussion with you on what we, what I would like to see as well. I, I think I had the same in mind for the front, so I think that covers that.
While you're around that, can we just talk about what fencing you're envisioning? Like if I have a two-story house, would you want the fence, you know, two stories tall so nobody could see our house or?
No, I think, I think you're talking more of like a six-foot decorative fence. A five or six-foot decorative fence is my understanding.
So that, that would not fit our, our regulations there.
What would be the, just so I can understand the point of the fence? I mean, you know, don't a lot of places in town, one yard backs up to another yard and there's not a fence between them?
I'll, I'll direct the, the question to.
That's true, but it's not transitioning from a single-family home to a multi-family development. And in this case, there's that transition. The easterly or northerly one on Watkins Road is, is abutting 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 units, not one unit. And so we think that's a significant difference.
Would, would we need to potentially, is that, is there specific units that we could see potentially a fence instead of trees if there's not sufficient space? Or I, I would be, I, I think one or the other, or if we did potentially need both.
It does suggest one or the other.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so fences or landscape, got it. Then I think the, the last question, but I think it was addressed, was what we can do around unit 1. Different question on the connection to the sewer on Overbrook. I mean, how much disruption, construction disruption would there be for that?
Area-wise or time?
Time.
So we have about 400 feet of sewer that we need to run through the adjoining properties, depending upon the contractor. You know, I don't see the installation taking much more, you know, properly staged much more than a week to two. Immediately after installing it, we would have to re-vegetate it. So, you know, obviously we try to do it in a dry period of the year. So there's, there's no erosion issues, but it's, it's not going to be a long time to install 400 feet of sanitary sewer.
All right, thank you. That was my questions.
Thank you. And I, I don't have any questions. I believe the staff, you've covered mostly everything except maybe one or two things that's outstanding. And I think most of the commissioners has asked mostly all the other questions. So at this point, we'll move into comments.
Excuse me, Chair. I fell off in Zoom.
You're, you're back.
And I did get back. So I just had a couple of quick questions, if I might.
Sure.
I'm looking at the lighting plan, and I don't actually see any stanchions or indications of lighting at the very entrance. And just wondering if there is going to be lighting for safety at night.
Yes, so you're referring, sorry.
I think the little black dots get close to the road, but not on the road. And just wondering if that.
No, it's not right at the road. So one of the, one of the challenges always with site lighting is there's a requirement that we don't have an overspillage of light onto adjoining properties and roadways. So you can't put a light right at the intersection. So we are proposing a light. Let me get to the photo. Close, yeah, just at the tip of that island.
Yep.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I basically have one right here at the tip of the island and the next one down here. So we have it, you know, we do have like a half-foot candle of lighting level at the intersection of roadway. I would love, I would love to have it closer. But again, you know, regulations require we don't have an overspillage of light onto adjoining properties. So that's why we pulled it back.
Gotcha. And then is it appropriate to ask about traffic again at this point? Just a quick refresher on peak hours?
Sure.
AM and PM? I just forgot what the numbers were again in broad terms.
In broad terms, so you're looking at a 300 and, sorry, you're looking at a 32 unit, single-family development based upon that type of use. You typically project 10 trips per unit, a trip being a one-way maneuver either in or out. So for this type of development, we're looking at a total, a total throughout the course of the day of 320 trips, which you get dispersed either in the morning or the afternoon. In the morning, your peak hours tend to run from 7:00 to 9:00 AM, which in this particular case of that 320, you're looking at about 20%. What it means is that you're probably looking at a car leaving this development every five to 10 minutes during those peak hours, a car.
Yep. AM or PM, doesn't matter, okay.
AM, correct.
And then just a quick question about parking along the sides of the street and wondering if that is going to be allowed or, or not.
So we're not promoting parking along the side of the street. That's why we do have a dedicated parking area to the back. Let me get to the site of the plan.
Like 9, 10?
Yeah, we've got nine spaces for overflow parking to try to keep people parking off the roadway.
Yeah.
Your requirement for a single-family residential house is we basically need to have two spaces per unit.
Right.
So the way these are actually set up is you have a two-car garage. In addition to, you have two parking spaces within the driveway itself. And if there's a visitor, we accommodate additional mine spaces for visitor. The only area we anticipate a pull-off or, you know, someone pulling off the side is where we have the mailbox kiosk.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we created a bump out in that area.
Yeah.
Would they potentially park along the road? Sure, they could potentially park along the road. But it, it, the road's only 24 feet wide, so it'd be similar to a narrow residential road.
Which, I guess I'm just thinking that, you know, we don't really use our garage. It's two-car garage, our cars are outside, you've got a lot of stuff in the garage. And then when we have parties or people over, family gatherings, you know, it's kind of like, okay, let's clean out the garage, put our cars in there. We still don't have enough space in front. What if somebody had like a big old graduation party or a big old birthday party? Where would all these people park?
Well, there's the nine spaces at the end of the project. And then also they, I'm sure a couple of people would park in front of the buildings themselves.
Yeah.
Similar to any other residential room, neighborhood that you have in town. It's somewhere with the roadway. It's the same, same road configuration, same width of road in Still Mountain Estates. But I think the way the difference that really have between this and Still Mountain Estates is I don't see any dedicated parking areas.
Okay. Does town have any concern about emergency access? Probably not, because it's not one of the conditions. Okay, I'm done, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Blaine. At this point, we'll start to take comments from the audience. Any comments from the audience? Come to the podium, state your name and address.
Thank you guys for having me back up here. I guess a comment I would have is sometimes after work when I'm driving home, either on Mountain Road or Simsbury Road, either I'm trying to take a left off of Simsbury up to Watkins, and somebody's in a big rush behind me and they really don't want to stop. And then there's a car coming and I'm like, do I have enough time to make this? I'm like, I should wait. The car behind me will speed around me. Okay, same thing happens on Mountain Road. My friend lived on the corner of Mountain Road and oftentimes people would lose control in the snow and hit his mailbox. So there are significant concerns on my part as a neighbor to the increased traffic. So that is one of my comments tonight. Again, thank you for having me up here. Obviously quite nervous. Don't go to the.
Excuse me, you're naming a dress, please? Name an address?
Yes, my name is Evan Fable. Sorry, I didn't say it earlier.
I got you already. I didn't see you before, okay.
So a couple summers ago, at the bottom of Watkins Road on Simsbury Road, they had to redo that. They had to redo the tunnel underneath because there was a big storm and it must have clogged. They removed a lot of trees. And that was a lot of great work. My concern is will that traffic go down to that small underpass underneath Overbrook? I guess that's a, not a question, it's just a comment. I'm concerned about Overbrook a little. It's not, it's not my street, so I shouldn't be talking about it. I also, I'm very thankful that you made the connection to Still Mountain Estates. I just find a big difference between Edith Lane and Still Mountain Estates. Still Mountain Estates didn't have neighbors. When you pull out of Still Mountain Estates' drive, there aren't houses. I'm also a little concerned about maybe a speed hump or two bumps on Watkins because my neighbors and I have witnessed many people try to make a cut through, saving themselves a minute or two, trying to go from here to there or from there to here. Our street doesn't even have streetlights. Sometimes I pull in at the end of a long day and I'm looking at the screen on my car and it's my navigation, and I look at the blueprint of it. And I think, cool, nice, 32 houses are going to be there pretty soon. You know, and I don't have a problem with looking at houses. I think they look great, but sometimes when there's too many in a little space, I get a little concerned. My other concern is that when trees and, the trees on the abutting property are removed, will that during the construction phase impact my property? If you're saying a car is going to leave every five minutes during the peak hours, does that mean the neighbors have to see the headlights? And what's going to happen at the holidays when you want to have more than two extra people at your house? Thank you for letting me make comments.
Thank you. Promote Mr. Miles.
He's a panelist, he can speak if he wish.
Good evening, everyone, again, and thank you, and thank you, neighbor, for those comments. My, Adrian Miles.
Just for the record, can you just state your name and address again?
Just for the record, can you just state your name and address again?
Yes, sorry. Adrian Miles, Nine Overbrook Farm Road, Bloomfield. Um, I still have a lot of concerns about this project. Um, I don't know if I, if I've seen any real renditions of the properties that are being proposed to be built there. I saw some sketches of, of potential properties and their sketches indicate as though there, there, there's a lot of room for improvement as far as the, the building, the size, the bump outs and stuff like that. And I think that we're being asked now as a panel, as a committee, as a commission, as, you know, as neighbors to approve, uh, building development. And we, I'm not sure, and forgive me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure if we have any real renditions of what the properties really are going to look like. So that's one of my, one of my statements here as far as a concern of mine. Also, in the meantime, um, the previous owner of that property, I know Jim took good, good care of, of the Watkins property. Um, you know, mowing it and cleaning it on, sometimes twice a week, sometimes eight, nine o'clock at night. And for the last since this property was acquired by the new owners, it's totally been run down. It looks like a forest. It looks, it's not being taken care of or anything like that. And I'm not sure if in the meantime, while we're going through these deliberations, back and forth comments and concerns regarding this project, what is the plan for maintaining this property? I did personally speak to one of the owners of the property, expressing my concern about the overgrown vegetation and, and, and it wasn't, it was an address. So I do have some questions and concerns about that. And I'm just asking the commission also. Just please do your due diligence. I mean, we're neighbors to this property. And just like my neighbor just expressed, the traffic coming in and out onto the state highway is a lot. Um, every day trying to, it's almost impossible now to turn left coming out of, of, um, of Overbrook Farms, even coming out of Watkins. So to even add another thirty-two properties with these cars and so on, it's a lot. And I'm just asking the commission to please, you know, just do, just do your due diligence. And then finally, Commissioner Peters, I, 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 I do really see your question and your concern regarding the sidewalks. Like, we need to start somewhere, you know? This project wasn't thought about five years ago, so we don't know what's going to be thought about ten years from now. And certainly if we, we can start with even a sidewalk, uh, uh, you know, approach in this plan, whether it's approval or not, to just simply say, hey, it's not, it's not going to work because it goes nowhere. I think that's a, that's a cop out. So, I, you know, as, as a resident, as a owner of, of our property, I'm still very concerned about what goes forward with this property. And that's just my, my comments here at this point.
Okay, thank you.
No one else with their hands raised?
Okay, uh, we'll start with the commission, uh, comments, uh, Commissioner Blint. And then Commissioner Hussein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the applicant has done, um, a lot to address, uh, wetlands issues because I'm also a member of Wetlands. This is Commissioner Hussein. And so we walked through this project with them pretty diligently. And, um, I think that the, the planting plan is great. Um, a lot of attention to, uh, the details that we've focused on. So thank you for that. Um, I live in this area. I see the traffic. I can't get out of my street. The thought of thirty-two more units in this area, frankly, doesn't excite me at all. Um, I think it's too dense. Applicant has said this wouldn't be feasible if we couldn't do this many units. I can't believe that, but that's my personal opinion. And, you know, everyone's got the right to do it. They want to do it their, their property according to the regulations. So I guess, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of the density. And I don't think that the sidewalk is going to go anywhere on Simsbury Road. So that wouldn't make any sense if there even was a sidewalk. A sidewalk on Watkins, you could walk to a neighbor's house. Maybe you could walk to the church down the street, but that's about it. And I don't really know where kids would go, uh, if they lived in this place. I mean, they would be stuck in their, their development because there is nowhere else to go except for the, the nice easements, you know? I think that was really thoughtful and, um, and appreciated, but, um, I don't know, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Hussein.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Um, again, we, I, I just want to add, we, we hear the concern of the, um, the residents and the neighbors, which is primary to us. And of course, like Commissioner Blint said, we all are aware of that. We know the challenges. But on, on the flip side, I must add that the applicant has addressed a lot of what we've asked for in the Wetlands and on TPZ. In fact, when they came initially for the PLR, um, they wanted more units. And we actually did our due diligence and said, no, you're not going to get more. And we brought them down to at least, at, at least similar to, um, the other properties in the area, the other PLRs in the area. So I think that was us being equitable, I guess, so and not being biased. But we also were not going to, um, give them more, even though it, it appears that it, it is still crowded. We, we all kind of agreed, but again, it's part of the approval process and the requirements, and they're doing everything for that. Um, as for the sidewalk, I understand, I look at stuff as in a safety perspective. And I understand that we probably should do some due diligence on that. But at, at the moment, um, like Commissioner Blint said, it's really, um, it's more of a, a risk in terms of having, getting someone hurt if you just have incomplete sidewalks. Um, I think indeed, we probably should look at it at some point. But in, but I, I, for this application, it probably is not ideal because of the state road and of, because of the low volume on the local road. Um, so I think that, that it's, that does introduce a challenge and just having sidewalks that, that dead ends to nothing or to act, an actual, right, um, active roadways is not ideal. So I think this is probably not the best application for it, but we do need to re-address that. And as, I, I know we talk about the traffic and, um, I work closely with the DOT. And I know that if they do a traffic study and they say that it seems a light, they'll put a light in. If they think that the volume calculations and everything that they have done says the volume should be fine, especially at peak hours, I would trust that their engineers are doing their job. And I would trust that, you know, the applicant obviously will follow those rules and regulations also. So again, these are done independently and reviewed by the DOT. So I, as much as I know the residents are concerned and it, there are certain intangibles that a DOT doesn't see. You guys see, but I still think at the end of the day, though, they felt like if it was the volume during peak hours and stuff like that was, would affect you guys, they would have done something. And I would do trust that their judgment is, um, their, at least their calculated judgment should be fine as it pertains to your safety. So I'm not too worried about that. Um, so, uh, again, overall, I think, um, I think, I think we've kind of, I'm, I'm fine where we're at right now. Providing that I said before, the conditions, um, from staff, the conditions from the town engineer are met. But also, as the project gets closer, I think the, the applicant will need to, and my condition, additional condition is that the applicant will need to come back to staff to get the approval for all the, the building, the building materials and the models before, as part of this condition. And I, I would not approve it unless they, they would accept that condition because I don't want them to have a free rein of what they can and cannot do. Their needs, they'll still come through staff, come through the town to make sure that, um, the materials are fine, the, 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 the types of, um, you know, the, the, the render-ins and the, and, and materials and everything they want to do, you know, meet standards and at least what it looks around in that area. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start at this end this time with, uh, Commissioner Mallett.
So I'll, I'll address the, the sidewalk. I think the, um, option for the, uh, ability, uh, but the waiver, I, I would be in favor of that. Uh, if there, there was a way to potentially, um, maybe think of it more as a deferral. Um, may, may be indefinite, but if there was a way to plan for, if in the future there, there was some connectivity, we, we would have that option. Um, versus, you know, being an afterthought. But a, as part of the approval, I, I think it makes sense that it would be part of, um, granting the waiver. Um, I think as part of conditions, if they're not already in there, I would want to see, um, the conservation easements, um, the staff, um, re- review of, uh, appropriate buffers, whether that's a fence and, and/or, um, trees. I definitely like, um, again, came up in the questions, the, the discussion on unit one of having some little bit different buffer on, on the front of Watkins. Um, I don't mind looking at houses either, but I also would want it broken up. I don't want to see a wall of vinyl, um, that, you know, is, is not great either. So something to keep some of the character of the neighborhood, um, that, that is well-established and very mature. Um, in general, I, I just, I'll thank the applicant for working with the wetlands and, and making some of the other adjustments. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Peters.
So, um, I do just want to re-, uh, iterate the fact that, um, I, I do think the sidewalks is an important thing. I do understand that the fact that this location, it's, um, it doesn't quite make sense. And I, and I urge us as a commission and even the, uh, uh, Department of Planning and Zoning to start to consider future uses and what those connectivities are. Because we, we have conversations about approving individual applications, but we also are talking about the plan of conserva-, uh, the plan of conservation and development for this town. So we do need to have a little bit more foresight and where this is going and to prepare for that. Because I've heard a lot of things today about, obviously, where we may vote on something to increase this area by thirty-five houses. And now we're talking about safety with sidewalks and walking on the street. And there's already no, uh, lights at that location. And these are all components, in my opinion, for disaster. And I, I respect, um, what Commissioner Hussein said about, uh, the engineers of the DOT making their, their calculations. But calculations are just that. There's a real-world environment and people are impatient. And people are quick to, quick to move. And sometimes that, the, these calculations don't account for that. I do think we just need to have a little bit more foresight. Um, and also want to just, this is a recommendation, a personal recommendation for the applicant, just not to take things so personal. Um, there's been some suggestions made to create, uh, buffers or, and I, I feel like it took personal point where you guys don't think we want to see your development, which is not the case. I do think you need to consider the user, um, as a person who is going to be occupying the space and living in that space. And that person needs to be accounted for. And not saying the fact that they don't want their house to be seen, but sometimes on the ground level. And that's, I, it's in your studies too, eye level. We, some people don't want people to see inside their house, eye level. That's a big, that's a big thing. And that's a safety concern for the, for people within those units. So I think that was the recommendation. It's not about what your units look like. And I am going to go back into what your units look like, because this one elev-, these elevations are nice. But you also said, um, you don't want this to be a cookie cutter environment. So just like Com- Commissioner Hussein said, I wouldn't fully accept this application without seeing what the potential of the other units or other buildings will be looking like as well, those options as well. Because there's a couple of things going on here and I want it to just be fully understood. You're creating a, a, a micro-community within a greater community. And I know we're talking about, um, respond to the, their envi- environment. You actually had the privilege of ignoring every other house and what they look like and what they represent. So we have to have a greater consideration of what you are bringing to Bloomfield and what you're bringing to this environment and what that looks like. Because you're literally shaping another, another artery of Bloomfield. And that needs to be respected and honored, um, as well. So I would like to see what those homes would look like and how that would contribute to the area. I'm sure they will be beautiful, but I, 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 I think the town and your neighbors will, will love to see that as well. To see what this, this area will grow, uh, grow into and be, because they, they've already bought into it. They're here. And the best, the best, um, thing you can do is respect your neighbor. And I think that would just give them a little bit of sense of ease and understanding of what's going to be going on. And, and just, just to feel some sense of comfort of what you're bringing to the area. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Peters. Commissioner Goff.
Yes, thank, um, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will echo a lot of the things said by, um, my colleagues, um, very quickly. Um, I want to thank the applicants for, um, you know, we've, we've heard about this development for how many, how many different hearings and, uh, we had the master plan, the site plan. And I do, I, I do want to commend them for being very flexible and working with, uh, the planner, working with the Wetlands Commission, working with, uh, our commission, um, because I think this has been more of a dialogue than an argument. Um, so just a few things, I do want to emphasize again that I hope a few of the comments about, uh, a couple of the mature trees will be considered, uh, especially those ones in the amenity area. Um, Commissioner Hussein, I believe, early on made the comment, uh, that there was no reason to, um, at this point, determine we're going to put in a do- a dog-run area versus a playscape. I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Let's wait and see how it evolves. You have an open area for some of those kinds of things. And I think, um, you know, as, as open as we can leave that now makes sense until you see what the, uh, demographics of the neighborhood are. I agree completely with everything that's been said about materials and designs of the houses. I, you know, the things I've heard about the houses, um, I, I think are very good. Um, I think, you know, you, you want to do the right thing in terms of making a good neighborhood. Uh, but I think it's important the town staff, uh, does sign off on those. Um, two things about the safety. Uh, first of all, uh, for po- people, especially on Watkins Road that have been concerned about this. Um, one of the things that I think may be important for the Watkins Road neighborhood to do in conjunction with the, you know, the, uh, potential new neighborhood at Edith Lane. Um, this, the town has a very, I think, a very robust traffic calming program where, um, ne- uh, neighborhoods go to, will come before the town and the town can, can suggest things to potentially create calming effects on the road. Um, you know, one of the extremes is speed humps. That's not necessarily a great thing. Sometimes it's just realigning the road a little bit so curves a little more. So I would recommend to, um, folks on Watkins and the surrounding area. I don't think you can do much about Simsbury Road, unfortunately. But, uh, for the, uh, for the town roads, uh, to bring that before the traffic calming, um, group um, and have them discuss, discuss your road, uh, and see what can be done with the new traffic, which I think there's more traffic, but I don't think that in this case it's, it's overwhelming. And I, I, finally, the sidewalks. Um, I completely understand the applicant and I understand the, you know, I understand everything that's been said about sidewalks. And I certainly understand the sidewalks to nowhere and them being potentially more of a traffic, um, safety hazard than an amenity. However, we've got to start somewhere, um, you know? And, and I know when, and I think that was my first night on this commission when we actually voted to amend the regulations and add the section about sa- sidewalks and connectivity. And one of the questions that was brought up was, okay, you know, we're requiring this for a new development. That's this little piece of property, but it's on this street and then there aren't sidewalks on the rest of the street. Um, so I think that, you know, it's not fair to put this down, you know, on this particular development. But I also think we and our plan of conservation and development and as a town need to address this issue. Um, it does seem, you know, again, I understand Simsbury Road is a different animal. It seems like we could put in a sidewalk to Wat- on Watkins Road. You know, this development would put in its piece. The other, uh, the other, uh, houses on Watkins could do the same. It would at least connect a mountain. Um, we can't solve that problem tonight, but I think it's something we have to put on the table and to, uh, to deal with. Because we can't have regulation and always waive it and always waive it for the reason that, well, there are six other pieces that don't have sidewalks. So, uh, again, that's not, that, that's, that's not an, an, any kind of dispersion on the, uh, the applicant. And I certainly understand Mr. Cassidy's story, um, and, um, uh, I, I, I completely understand that. Uh, but people want sidewalks. They want safe places to walk. And, uh, we've surrendered too much of our lives to the automobile as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goff. Commissioner James.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I.
I appreciate the owners for choosing Bloomfield. I I appreciate you guys looking to build in Bloomfield. But because I can't use any stronger language, I'm just going to speak on something that the rest of the commission, they've spoken on a lot of important points, but they haven't spoken on yet, is the affordability. Like, my goodness, half a million dollars to start upwards, nearly a million dollars. I I just know Bloomfield wants more affordable units. I'm not alone in this thinking. There are many people who say they want affordability in Bloomfield. And these are not affordable. It's very hard because we are in a situation where we need units just overall. But this makes Bloomfield less accessible for people who want to live here and afford to live here. And not just for people who are moving into these units, but the rest of the town is impacted by this. I think it's really important that, you know, we get some of that housing stock diversity. We get some of that more affordable options within Bloomfield. I appreciate you choosing Bloomfield, but can we get something that people can afford? I also want to discuss the regulations on, it's not just a sidewalk regulation. It's also a multi-use path in the regulation. So it's not just to say, you know, it has to be a sidewalk, but a multi-use path. And they've mentioned this already, but we have to start somewhere. We can't say because there's none that exists, it's not a good idea. It's across the street from a country club. I mean, if you pay a million dollars for a house, I could assume you might want to go to this country club. Could we get a path to walk there? Or do you just want to have a path to walk around to say, I'm getting out of my house, I'm walking my dog, I'm walking this path? It's a half a mile, it's, you know, three quarters of a mile, that counts for something. It's something for today. That's just the immediate things that we can think about. And we have to think long term. We do have to think towards the future and start somewhere. We have these regulations for a reason. And to continue to grant waiver after waiver, I just, it defeats the purpose of the regulation if we're just going to make waivers for them because they don't make sense. We should have made a regulation that makes sense. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just echo some of the comments that's already been made. Basically, I appreciate you guys coming in and addressing the issues with the wetlands. Appreciate you coming in and addressing most of the issues. I think there may be one or two outstanding with TPZ, which I'm sure the intention is to address those. I do understand about the sidewalk. We did put regulations in, but it seems as though that it just may not be appropriate in this particular location. Not that we're giving up on our regulations, but it just kind of like is a funny fit here. So I'm going to echo the last thing, and that is just to make sure that you guys come in with a building approval prior to getting this addressed. But other than that, I appreciate you addressing the inland wetlands and also the TPZ issues. With that said, yes, you'll have, one of the applicants, either either you or Mr. Cassidy, will have a last chance to make any closing remarks.
Okay, I'd like to thank the commission for their consideration, you know. We have been working together on this for quite a while. And we would be willing, you know, if you were to approve it tonight, to say it's subject or that staff would have the right to review our designs. And I just hope it's not going to be so restrictive that, let's say, we sell a house to somebody, they say, hey, Steve, you know, I want a glass in my front door instead of a solid door. And I have to tell them, you know, I can't sign a contract today till we go back to the town planning board to get approvals. Because these customers are going to come to us and they, some of them may have things I'm not even thinking about right now. You know, if somebody said, oh, I wish I had a fireplace in the front of my house, could I do that or something? And and I'd like to be able to have our salespeople be able to just tell the guy yes or no and not say, well, it's all subject to town approval. So I'd like to maybe at our general, you know, have the approval vote tonight, say that it's, you know, that all the general architecture we're going to use and will be subject to staff review and approval. But I'd hate to get so tight that we, you know, if somebody wants to add a window or something and we're going to be in a position where we can't.
Well, excuse me, I can I can assure you that we'll be consistent. We're not going to ask you to do anything different from what any other ones are. So you don't you don't have to be concerned about that.
Okay, thank, because I mean, it was difficult for us to totally finalize every optional architecture we're going to have because the plan has been evolving. I mean, we just had that new thing in Wetlands where we had to get rid of the front bedroom on some units. So that's created a new look that we're going to have, you know. So we could, as we further go along, you know, we'd like to, we can run this stuff by the staff and we're fine with you putting in the approval motion tonight. But we would like to get the ball rolling. I mean, we've been talking to the Metropolitan District Commission. They say they will not look at our plan until they have the approval from the town of Bloomfield. So we're just hopeful that we could have some kind of approval tonight so that we could move on with them. Because I don't know if any of you have worked with the MDC, but they're not the, let's just say they're quite a bureaucracy to deal with. And, you know, it's going to take a while. Right now, they like having the excuse that, hey, we can't even look at it, Steve, because you don't have the town's approval yet. But I'd love to get moving with them soon.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cassidy, is there anything you'd like to say to make any closing remarks regarding this application?
Sure, I just like to, again, Steve Temkin is on. And I'd like to thank the commission for working with us. I know it's been a process, but I think we've come a long way on this project. Again, I appreciate you letting me tell my little story about sidewalks and, you know, why I don't feel they're appropriate in this area. I do understand, I think it was Commissioner, Ms. Commissioner or James's comment about, you know, possibly having a connection to this development towards the country club. The only issue I see with that is that you have to cross the state highway. There's no crosswalk there. It's creating another dangerous situation. Unfortunately, you know, we've tried to do what we call mid-block crosswalks. And DOT tends to frown on those. I don't see that happening, but I do, I do understand wanting to have a connectivity. I'm all for it, but in the appropriate places, you know. On another note, I would always love to see the town develop a regulation to allow infills of a section of sidewalks in places. I think that's where it's more appropriate. But here on Simmsbury Road and Watkins Road, where there are no connections, I I I strongly, I would strongly request a waiver of sidewalks. And I think as Stephen has said also on the architecture, as an additional approval, I think we'd be glad to, you know, work with staff on the final design of the buildings. We just need some flexibility as we have prospective buyers come in that we can, you know, work with staff as to we develop those plans. So with that, I'm going to conclude my presentation. And I, again, I appreciate the commission's time this evening in hearing this application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cassidy. At this time, the chair entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Peters, second by. Oh, Commissioner Hussein, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Commissioner Blint followed by Commissioner Hussein, I think.
It's been moved and second. Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify now that Kevin is on to which of the alternates will be voting.
Everybody.
Thank you for asking.
But Kevin, oh, it's seven is. Yeah, Kevin joined.
Okay, are there any further discussions other than what we just had? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, chair close, the chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Now we'll entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make the motion to approve seventeen and twenty one R. Watkins Road, nineteen Overbrook Farm Road, three ninety one Simmsbury Road, the special permit and the site plan applications per section five point four point D. Point three and five point four point, I think it's a one, I'm not sure if it's a I, of Bloomfield's zoning regulations for thirty two to thirty two single-family dwelling units in the PLR district. The applicant is T and M Homes. The owner is Rehoboth Court LLC. And I would like, whoever's second, just help me with the the dates of and of the site plan and the letters from the town staff, in addition to the comments from the town engineer and also from the comments of staff tonight, which also includes the addition of the approval of the the build-in foot, the the build-in materials and I guess the architectural renderings to be approved by the town. And as they get closer into add any additional materials and so forth. I do apologize if I missed something and feel free to correct me if I missed something.
Want to add the conservation easement?
Okay, and the conservation easement.
And and the waiver of the sidewalk provision.
Thank you, and the waiver of the sidewalk provision.
Hey, Kevin.
And and all the comments and staff memo dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Correct.
Is there a second? There's been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I will second. Can I just ask a question? Did we include the waiver?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hussein, it's been seconded by Commissioner Goff. Any further discussion?
Did we decide the alternate was going to vote?
Everyone.
Everyone does, okay.
Okay, all those in favor of approving this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Abstentions. Or abstaining?
One nay, one abstention.
Okay, and the chair votes aye.
Do we have two abstentions or one? Two abstentions, one nay, and the rest, all approved. Did you get that, Joyce?
I have one abstention, that's Commissioner James, and one nay, Commissioner Blint.
Commissioner Peters also abstained.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes vote from Commissioner Goff, Commissioner Lester, Commissioner Millet, and Commissioner Hussein.
And chair.
Chair votes aye, approve. It looked like the motion carries. This application passes. Thank you.
Bye, this evening. Have a nice holiday.
Thank you. Yeah.
You want to take a five-minute break or you want to keep going?
Yeah, let's take a break.
The commission is going to take a five-minute recess. We will resume at nine fifty-five.
It's nice to see you, Josh.
Just seven minutes.
Yeah. I don't have too many comments for him. I do have a couple of things like Evan was saying, things that don't exist.
All right, one moment, I'm just going to, can you mute? We're on, we're on recess, we're going to mute the, one moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting back in session at ten oh three. Uh if the secretary is there, could you read the legal notice of the next item on the agenda? It's a public hearing?
Yes, I will. Excuse me. All right.
Recording in progress.
One second, I have a few meetings. I apologize. I'm just gonna get off my phone. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. There was some feedback. All right, let's do this again. All right, so the legal notice for the town of Bloomfield Town Planning and Zoning Commission, the notice is hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a special meeting in person at eight hundred Bloomfield Avenue Council Chambers Room and virtually via Zoom on Thursday, December nineteenth at seven P M. And consider the following. At um part eight, two hundred Seaberry Drive, special permit application for changes to dimension elements in the master plan per section five point four point H of the zoning regulations for a new proposed addition and demolition of two cottages in the P E C district. The applicant and owner is church home of Hartford Inc. Incorporated, sorry, Inc. here of Renee J. I do apologize. It's them them Scone, president and CEO. Applicants are, applications are available for review on the town of Bloomfield website and the land use office located at eight hundred Bloomfield Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut, zero six zero zero two. Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Kevin Hussein, secretary dated twelve seven, twelve fourteen, twenty twenty-four, number seven seven three, six nine seven two. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh is there anyone here to present this application?
I just need to get the presentation queued up for them.
Sure. And before you start, just state your name and address.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, point of clarification. This is the beginning of the public hearing, correct?
Say that again.
This is the beginning of the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, do we have to make the motion to open the public hearing? Or do we have, even though I wrote, I read the um ad, that's enough. Just want to clarify that.
I don't, I don't think so, but I guess we can. Is there a motion to uh open this public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye.
Uh it's under Cynthia Jensen. I'm with Richter and Sieg, and I'll just be getting the presentation set up. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Renee Bernascony, and I'm the president and CEO at Seaberry. Address two hundred Seaberry Drive, Bloomfield, Connecticut. Great, thank you for your time this evening, uh this late evening. Uh we did want to go through a brief uh overview of Seaberry. I'm delighted to present a very small addition to the Seaberry campus, so hopefully this is a very easy approval for this evening. So uh just to give you a brief introduction to Seaberry, if you don't already know us, and hopefully that you you do. Um Seaberry is a not-for-profit interfaith um active life community. We were established in Bloomfield in nineteen ninety-two, and we serve individuals fifty-five and older on campus, although at this time we have uh folks who are all over sixty-two um and well over. We have a couple of centarians. Uh we were, however, founded in eighteen seventy-six, which a lot of people don't realize, as church home of Hartford Incorporated, doing business as Seaberry, and we are an affiliate of the Episcopal Episcopal Church uh, excuse me, in Connecticut. Uh Seaberry offers independent living, assisted living, enhanced living, and memory care, as well as skilled nursing. Additionally, we have a robust life care at home program uh where we were first in state and fifth in the country. We were instrumental in changing legislation in order to bring that program to Connecticut and a private duty homemaker uh companion agency. So the one thing I wanted to really point out in terms of who we are, um which separates us from the competition, is the fact that Seaberry, which is very unusual or unique for a continuing care retirement community, Seaberry has almost sixty percent of its healthcare beds that are licensed for Medicaid and um old age assistance. So what's important about that is affordability. I wanted to speak to the mayor about the fact that hopefully that could apply to your eight thirty G because that's a lot of folks and that's a lot of affordability that we're providing. Um and that's really important and an important part of who we are as in an organization. The charitable uh mission, um and a big part of that comes through the Seaberry Charitable Foundation, which has historically provided over four point five million in benevolent support to those in need, as well as other life-enriching programs and projects. Um Seaberry subsidizes more than two million annually on that budget, um which is the gap between the private pay and the Medicaid. So if you're familiar with Medicaid, you would probably know that they don't even usually cover fifty percent of a private pay rate. So there's a a huge gap. Um so that's who we are as an organization. Um we have a religious affiliation, as I mentioned, and we're very excited about the fact that we will be celebrating our one hundred and fiftieth anniversary in twenty twenty-six. So something we're very proud of. Okay, so an introduction to the project, and as I noted, this is a very small addition to a large house. Um this particular project has been on the strategic plan since two thousand fifteen. It was known that since nineteen ninety-two, we've been eliminating the less desirable inventory for most communities built in nineteen ninety-two. They built with many, many one-bedroom apartments um in where we still have at least twenty-five percent of our inventory in one-bedroom. That's not the demand for the majority of folks. So uh this was always uh named the replacement or rightsizing and replacement project, this little sort of leftover piece of our large addition that we did uh back in two thousand eighteen. So the scope of this project is twenty-four apartments, each ranging from thirteen to sixteen hundred square feet. That's where we do feel there is that sort of affordability. We are life care. Um but that size is appropriate to what the demand is. Uh we will have underbuilding parking, just like our south wing, which is about twenty-nine spaces um and additional surface parking um as part of this project. Um we do hope to start the spring of twenty twenty-five. I might note that our board approved this project in two thousand nineteen. Uh we were well on our way through the design development phase when the pandemic hit. So we thought, okay, we'll delay it a bit and get back to it, and it's about five years later. So this was really meant to be that last leg of that large project uh that we completed in two thousand eighteen. Um so spring of twenty twenty-five, we hope to start, and then it would be completed about the summer of twenty twenty-six. Um hopefully, you know, and hopefully you know from Bob who's sitting here, that we have a very significant green footprint um and have a huge uh uh green initiative on campus. Uh utilization of geothermal as well as solar uh will be um incorporated into this project, uh which we're very excited about. Okay, so I do want to address the fact that we do believe that we're within um the density requirements for the P E C um currently, and this is a little bit of a moving target only because we've been reducing inventory. So uh we're currently at two hundred and fifty-one units when you count the seven cottages that were left empty in two thousand nineteen because at that time we were hoping to demolish them. And again, with the pandemic, that was all delayed. Um so the seven cottages are empty. Um and there are four of the seven cottages, two structures, but four cottages that are scheduled for demolition uh this winter. So with that count of two fifty-one and the removal of seven units, the addition, we hope, of the twenty-four units, which is what this project is all about, would get us to a total future dwelling units of two hundred and sixty-eight, uh which does conform with the current uh P E C uh regulations. I do want to note that during the project, um three of the cottages that will remain, it's two structures, um but three cottages inside the construction area will be used by the construction crew uh for their offices and their facilities. Um we've done a number of projects on this campus and try, when possible, not to bring in construction uh trailers. Uh during the last phase, we built out, you know, sort of an area that had been storage for the administrative offices. But um so those units will all be, those three will be used by the construction crew, and then the future determination of those units, uh which will not be residential, will be for the future, and of course, will be back in front of uh you all if if it's other than uh residential. So at this time, I do want to show you some of the elevations. Um I don't know if you've been by our property. Um it's sprawling. Uh we're on sixty-eight acres. Um you can see from sort of like finish to end. Um the south wing addition was our latest addition that was completed in two thousand eight. Uh this is simply a small bump out of that particular wing, and as I said, was planned to immediately follow that wing, um except we had the pandemic. Um you can see that the south wing um addition is in that uh blue box. I know our architects are not impressed by my box, but I think this is a good way to show you where on the campus it is and how small it is relative to the rest of the Seaberry campus. This is the south wing um building that exists today. Um and again, completed in two thousand eighteen. You'll see in a moment that at the end of that building, um there are very few windows, and it was meant for a future wing and expansion. So So from this particular perspective, you'll see that the connector is that far end. So this is looking at it from the west. Here it is, looking at it from the east. You can see the underbuilding parking. There's a garage door there. Connector to the new wing is now to the left. And then there it is, the connector to the new wing, and the new wing really fits up against this particular building without blocking even those circular windows that you see on the right. Okay, so more of a computer image of the south wing, looking at the roof and the south wing extension. The west elevation of the new wing. So it's going to be seamless as compared to the wing that already exists in the way that the finishes will be the same. The building isn't old enough for anything to be outdated. And you'll even see the Episcopal Church logo, which is that star reference over the pedestrian door into the connector to the new wing. So here is the east elevation and the south elevation. So again, new building looks very much like the south wing building. We do have the entire design team that we had from 2015 to 2018 in terms of civil architects, really the entire design crew. So that's great to see. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Tom Grimaldi, who's going to provide the civil engineering. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Tom Grimaldi. I'm a principal engineer from RR Hillbrand Engineers and Surveyors. We're consulting professional civil engineers. We did the original work on the last three phases of Seaberry, A, B, and C, which also included the geothermal, the carports. It was a Green Globes project. We did a lot of bio-retention basins and the like. I just wanted to point out that, oh, that went one too far. We received our approval from the Inland Wetlands Commission last month, and we addressed the comments for Mr. Castaldi that was submitted recently, and that is the revised plans that you have in front of you now. We addressed his comments. Today, we received comments just before noon from Mr. Trotiere, the town engineer. I had a conversation with him. We're actually going to have a brief meeting tomorrow. Some of his comments were addressed as part of Mr. Castaldi's review, and the remainder of the comments, we found to be pretty negligible in nature. Nothing was, you know, outstanding that it was going to change the scope of the project. So we take no exception with his comments, and we'll have that meeting with him in the morning. This is the demolition plan. And you'll see, I got the mouse here, this is the existing parking lot that is there in this area now. The wing that's existing is right here. This is the Phase B wing or the south wing, and the addition will be going through this area here. So this parking lot will be removed. These two structures will be removed, the carport, and these are the two structures to remain in the hatched area. This is the site layout plan. It's a little bit difficult to see, but if you look closely, we underlaid the existing driveway access and parking lot, which is, I'm kind of tracing around it here with the mouse. So the parking lot is in this area. Here's the existing driveway. So the proposed driveway has moved slightly to the west. There's access to the underground parking garage. There's 28 parking spaces down in there. We're removing 23 parking spaces. We're adding 30 total for net of 53 for net total increase of 30. The parking lot proposed is in this area here. This is the proposed patio. We put that patio in there kind of as a placeholder for storm drainage, because Mr. Trotiere asked me to make sure that we included everything in the storm drainage system so that once it was approved, any future work that's going to be done in this area wouldn't have to come back or increase the size of the drainage system. The drainage system is pretty extensive. We, with the new 2024 Stormwater Quality Manual from DEEP, were required to have a zero increase in runoff, meet water quality volumes. So there's a storm drainage system in this area. They're all underground systems, which then connects in series to another storm drainage system here, and then the final one, which outlets into the existing storm drainage system in Seaberry Drive. We have provided a zero increase in runoff for all storm events from 1, 2, 5, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storm events. This gives you a little bit better idea of this end of the easterly end of the storm drainage system. This is utility plan. The utility plan has no contours on it. We like to break up the plans so that it's clear for the approval process and for the contractors to install it. So the new building will be serviced by sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer connection is here along to the south. We also extended the sanitary sewer up in this area to maintain sanitary sewer connections on the two buildings to remain. The proposed water and electric will come through the existing building, and there'll be a new gas service lateral that will come in in this area here. That mouse is running away, right here, and come across. Erosion and sedimentation control. We really took a close look at this and tried to maximize erosion and sedimentation control and think about everything that could possibly take place on site. So you'll notice there's a hatch in this area here. Any place where we have slopes over 5%, we're using erosion-controlled blankets. The perimeter controls are doubled up. There's erosion-control geotextile, sil fence backed with sediment logs. The underground detention systems will be used as temporary sediment traps, and we have pump settling basins, which is up in this area. The purpose of that was to try to contain most of our construction in this courtyard and keep it away from the wetlands, which were down in this area here. This is a circulation plan. Circulation plan gives you an idea of the traffic in and out. There is a sidewalk that runs around and will connect into the proposed addition. That was one of the things that we tried to maintain. One of the comments from the town engineer was pedestrian circulation as well. So that's why we kept that on there. And at that point, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Mike Seegan from Richter and Seegan. He's the landscape architect.
Good evening. I'm Mike Seegan with Richter and Seegan. We are, as Tom mentioned, the landscape architects. With me is Cynthia Jensen from our office as well. We're working together on the project. We'll be providing an overview of the site landscape and planting plans. The basic approach that we had here was, in the plan, as you can see, that's up there now, was to carry through and be consistent with the level of landscape that exists on the campus now. So that was really our goal, to carry that through. And there are four key components to the landscape plan. The first is the landscaping itself and planting of the addition. Let me see here. Obviously, that's up through here. The second component is the tree planting and landscaping of the parking area. This thing's running all over the place here. The third component is the really significant upgrade of the south entrance, and I'll talk a little more about that and show some of the sketch-up models that we did and what that's going to look like. And then the fourth component is extending the white rail fence and flowering cherry streetscape along the front and along roadway, which really nicely defines the campus. So those are the four main components. Talking about the planting in the parking lot, it really starts out front here, continues right on through. We meet or exceed the requirements for parking within a parking lot. We're also up here, there's, jumping around here a little bit there. About halfway down there is this existing utility area with transformer and generator. There, it's much more visible now with the removal of the cottages. So we are screening that with some ornamental fencing and then adding some plantings there. This is an enlargement of the building addition. You can see the very extensive foundation planting, carrying through really the character that's throughout the campus, combining both flowering shrubs and perennials and evergreens as well on the foundation, and then adding some canopy trees and flowering trees around the building, both to enframe it and soften the view of it, especially as you come around on the perimeter road, the massing and the new, really elevation of the building. As I mentioned, there's some fencing, and this is really campus standard fencing that's throughout the campus that will extend into this project area and be repeated. The upper left is the shadow box or border and board fence, which will screen the utility area. It has a trellis topper on the top. And then the rail fence that now is located along the major roadway, that will be continued. It's almost to the end to this new south entrance area, landscaped area, and that'll be continued through along with the flowering cherry trees. So that's one main component of this project. That's the standard, campus standard light fixture. It's LED fixture, full cutoff, night sky compliant, meets all the regulations. There are, I believe, 10 fixtures that are going to be relocated that are really in the, Tom showed you, the existing parking lot. Those are going to be relocated to the new parking lot and drive, and only two new fixtures will be added. So it's just repeating this campus standard. And the photometric plan on the right shows that there really is no light spillage out of the immediate project area. This is the new entrance. I shouldn't say new. It's really the upgraded entrance. Some significant improvements here. There's no change to the signage. It's all in the landscape improvements, and we'll have a sketch-up model of that. This is what exists there out there now. It's quite bland, and in fact, this used to be, it really was originally designed as a service entrance. And the main entrance, as many of you may know, is up to the north part. This now is probably more used than the main entrance is. So it's become an increased importance here, and as this part of the southern part of the campus has developed, it's become more and more important. This is the existing north or main entrance. You can see, much more inviting. There's amenities here that we'd like to carry over and include improvements to the south entrance, the plantings, maybe the fencing material, the evergreen trees that are backdrop to this entrance to give it a sense of enframe it. We'd like to carry that over to that south entrance, but we don't want it to be an exact replication. Each one of these entrances to have their own kind of unique look to them. This is the left side, the before shot. We have an after that we've done in Photoshop, but this is the existing conditions. And then this is the proposed improvements there, where we're adding some hedging in front, a greater mixture of plant material, a variety in textures and colors, backdrop by the white fence with stone columns, and then behind that shrubs, and then the evergreens that give it even more of a backdrop. And on the left side are the continuation of that rail fence and the flowering cherries along the road, and then the flowering cherries are taking up the entrance road as well. So a big change here to just bring some of the amenity and tie into the other main entrance as well. On the other side of the road, we've got some more challenges there. You can see the solar collectors in the background in the parking lot. And, but we are going to work with the existing sign that's there now. And this is the proposal. Again, repeating the white fencing and the stone columns, the hedging and low material in front, and some backdropping, some flowering shrubs, and then a much denser, more, I think, quite a bit larger grove of evergreens in back to screen off those solar collectors that are in the background. So that's a quick overview of the project and the upgrades in this southern part of the campus as this piece, this small addition, is being done. We're trying to raise the landscape level of this entire area. That concludes my part of the presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report that we have the standard pre-filing and filing comments. We have just a couple of mainly technical comments. Other than that, we think it's a great addition to the property and to the community. We've been following this, you know, in some comparison with our other PEC in town, and we are struck by the sort of a different approach in terms of how they, in terms of their their business plan and where others are adding cottages, they are choosing to reduce cottages here. Where others are having structures that require folks to be outside, to move to amenities, they've chosen here to keep it inclusive, because the residents have indicated a desire to be able to reach the amenities without having to go outside. So we found that interesting as we went through the conference discussions. In terms of our added comments, what we put there besides, you know, responding to and endorsing the engineers and wetland comments, we noted that in the narrative they submitted to us and the site plans, the data on it is, in terms of unit count, is very inconsistent. The unit count on the, it has, you know, 60 to 70 units. And it must just have been a, you know, some simple error that was made, but those need to be made consistent. We would appreciate a little additional information on the proposed use of the two cottages that are not being demolished. They have not indicated a use. And under the PEC, we really need to know what is going to be happening at those two and that they make sure that they're consistent with the PEC regulations. We also suggest, or we asked that they, on the parking calculations and on the plans that we have a breakdown of the of the parkings by dwelling unit, and they may have done that in the revised plans. And also that the height and length, the stall depth has to be indicated on the parking spaces in terms of just overall dimensions. And other than that, staff would recommend with those conditions and the normal conditions that are there that are included in the proposed motion, we would support this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that have any questions at this time? No? Okay, we'll go to the commission and we'll start with Commissioner Hussein and then Commissioner Blint.
Great, I'm glad you started me because I had a question for clarification just to begin. So this is not a, this is just the special permit application for changes to the PEC? The master plan, sorry, right? This is not a site plan approval? I want to make sure that we're clear here because.
The revised site plan is part of the approval that they've submitted.
So it's a revised site plan is part of.
It's a revised site plan, which revises a site plan and the master plan to the.
When was this passed again originally?
The zone change passed in 1988.
No, no, I mean, actual, their application, I guess, it must have been a while, right?
1992?
92, okay, because I have some comments though, but I feel like, I still feel like we need to discuss some more of the site plan, I guess. Or at least the proposed building. I don't see anything on the proposed building. So how are we, are we proving this again contingent upon renderings and same materials and?
If I can clarify, we're approving that under a modification of their existing master plan. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hussein, I believe they indicated in their, both in their presentation and what they've submitted to us, that the building materials are basically identical to what is already there.
Yeah, but none of us were here in 1992 when this was approved, so I would at least like.
No, it's similar to the, to when the south building was built. I think the last addition done there was in 99.
Right, right, again, I don't have a problem with the site plan stuff, but I still would, probably would have liked to seen what the proposed building was going to look like, what type of materials. And let's talk about some of the electrical, mechanical, are the two buildings going to be connected? Or is it just going to be abutted? What are we, you know, I have some questions on the site plan, but I just was curious as to, you know, there's no floor plans for the building. The electrical, plumbing, mechanical, you know, it's been in the 90s, it's 20 plus years, so.
No, so if I may, coming back up as a presenter, Renee Bernasconi, I'm not sure if you can see me, but as part of my presentation, I was sharing with you that we had completed a substantial repositioning project that was completed in 2018. So this building here that you're seeing right here to the very left is the existing building. There is a small connector wing, and I'll let the, you know, the more technical people talk about how that's connected mechanically and all of that. We are running.
Plans, what I would like, again, sorry to interrupt you, but what I'm saying is that like, I'd like to see plans of how it's connected, how the utilities connected, what each floor plans looks like. And, you know, not just a rendering or an architectural elevation. We want to see some of that floor plan information, just because we weren't here when this application was approved. This is just one of my questions, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, no, that's okay. I mean, we can easily get you the floor plans there almost or essentially like the ones that are currently in the south wing. But in terms of the exterior elevations, which it sounds like you're clear on, it looks just like the building that was completed in 2018, not 1992.
All right, yeah, I just want to make sure again, I want you to understand, like, yeah, I don't mind the renderings and stuff like that, but I'd still like to. So I'll provide comments on what I have in front of me right now. And then I'd like for the applicant to submit their mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and their architectural plans for the new addition of the building, so I can comment on that too. Even though it was presented, you know, a while ago in 2018, I wasn't part of the commission at the time, so.
If I may, Commissioner Hussein, I believe they did submit some floor plans.
I didn't see that.
We submitted a limited set of architectural plans with the original application. It has floor plans and I believe a couple of elevations in it.
Yeah, what was sent to me.
I have a copy.
What was sent to me was the package with the approval letters, sheet with a key plan, sheets number one. It was a 27-page plan, which included the, everything, most of everything you presented at night to demo, the landscaping.
Sure.
The site grading plan, the overall site utility plan, site utility plans part two, the erosion sedimentation control. There's a few sheets on that, the site details, site details.
I can share.
Can you, yeah, I was going to say, can you pull it up? Because I think you.
I can share the limited architectural plan that was submitted, one moment, please.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wish, but still, you can share that in the meantime. Well, let's go back to the site plan in the meantime, I have some questions. And I think one of the ones that I had, and I guess the plans, the building plans would show me, is the new addition connected, will be connected to the current building? I guess right to this west elevation here, where you have your, the church logo, where the new and the old building meets, is that, those two buildings are going to be connected? So you can walk from one building into, directly into the other?
Yes, yeah, I'll address that. So Mike Oaks from Seaberry, 200 Seaberry Drive. Yeah, the buildings are connected, so there is going to be a firewall between the existing and the new building, but they are connected and they will be connected on all floors. So although residential floors and the garage floor, they will be connected.
And they'll be have access then too, correct?
Yes, correct. It's going to be continuous. That connector you see with the logo is, is actually like a hallway.
Right. The patio area, you're showing that for drainage, yes, but I don't see any details of what that potential is going to look like. Does someone, I didn't see in the plans what that patio area is going to look like. Is that a covered patio area or is it just an exposed patio area?
It'd be exposed, exposed. It's future, it's not, it's not in this, it's not in this plan. It's shown for, I think it's shown for hard surface and for drainage, but it's not part of this development.
Okay, that's for future. No, you said, you guys mentioned it numerous times, that you have excess parking. If you go back to site plan, you can go back to the image that shows the site plan for the parking. Any site plan with a parking for parking lot number eight. You have excess parking. Why do you need that lot number eight? I think, I think with such a large campus, the more green spaces we have, it's better. And if we have an excess parking over, you said we have, it was 68 and you only need 30. I don't necessarily see the need for lot number eight if you go back to your site plan, your parking. And I think that's probably, let me see how much parking I count. Yeah, is this one on the lower level here, right where the ADA walk is, where that crosswalk is? There's one, two, three, four, yes, that entire area. Why do you need?
This area here.
That's all that parking.
Well, we're just trying to maximize the parking in the area, especially for visitors. And if they do something in the future with the other two buildings, they'll have plenty of parking there. There's 28 spaces in the garage. There's 24 units, so that really only allows one space per unit. And we tried to get that closer to a two spaces per unit. So if someone had more than one vehicle, or if they had a visitor, at least they could have some parking. So that was the reason for the additional parking.
All right, I have a lot more questions, but I know it's already late at night. And I want to defer some of my, some other questions to my other commissioners, I do apologize. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Goff, Commissioner Blint.
I was going to ask about parking too. I wasn't too sure about how that worked out, but now I'm clearer. I really don't have too much right now. My, I guess it's actually minor. There is a sign that says reservoir two service entrance. Is that really how you want to present that new enhanced entrance? I know you've got the nice sign across the street, but it's kind of far away.
We officially have access to reservoir two, and that's a Bloomfield, Town of Bloomfield sign.
Oh, okay.
So we'd be happy to push that back a little with your recommendations, but that was installed by the town.
Oh, okay. Thank you for the flowering cherry trees then.
Okay, we'll start at this end, questions, Commissioner?
All right.
Mallette.
For the four-star story apartment, I see it's just an extension. The special permit specifically for that is just because of the height of the building, right? Okay. Other, I think I was reading somewhere it was a 35, and then the additional is just for this approval.
Correct.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Peters.
No questions.
Commissioner Goff?
Yeah, I'll just ask one question with the, with the plantings and so forth. Now that you're doing, you know, you're proposing this renovation, have you gotten the arboretum status for Seaberry?
Hello again, we should have that shortly, but we will have the level one arboretum for, from ArbNet. So we're just working through the final details, which is, I believe, establishing the website.
Okay.
So we will have that.
So just as the follow-up question to that then, is the, you know, have you taken into consideration in the planting, you know, the planting inventory, how you're going to add, potentially add to the arboretum?
Yes, and that was part of what we worked with, with Richter and Seegan in terms of making sure that we had unique varieties. I mean, there was some need to make sure that everything was really consistent in the front, but there's many varieties behind that, and our residents are very particular about bringing native species to the campus, which we do have a lot of. So yes, there'll be a great mix there.
But then, and then the, when you showed the renderings of the, you know, the new, the new south entrance, I think of it as east and west.
It was, it was, it was the former service entrance.
Right, the former.
And we built the expansion, you know, it really meant that now the traffic really flowed more so through that.
So I noticed you, you know, besides the cherry trees that you've been planting along the edge, then you did plan on planting coniferous trees. Are you going to continue the Douglas firs that you have on the other side?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey. Commissioner James.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I definitely can appreciate 60% of the beds or being designated for Medicaid patients. This is definitely a vulnerable segment of our population. Could you just clarify what you mean by beds? Is that like the memory care, healthcare beds?
It would be healthcare, so in skilled nursing, and again, this is really unique for a life plan community, usually there is no Medicaid. It's all private pay, you have to be able to afford to go. But because of our history, we came to Bloomfield with about 40 individuals who are already on Medicaid. So it was, it's a part of who we are. So we have 30 beds out of our 72 beds in skilled nursing that are Medicaid eligible. And we now have 52 beds, so all of the Waterman, which is that separate building on campus, enhanced living memory care is all licensed for residential care. We just received that approval, so that means someone who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford assisted living, or once they're there and they run out of money, they would be able to remain in that level of care and not have to move to a nursing home because of the Medicaid. And then our traditional assisted living, and again, this piece of it, the residential care is unique. We have 22 of the 57 apartments that are licensed for old age assistance. I'm proud to say that my mother-in-law is there, is, and my sister's mother-in-law, family members are there.
Great. And for the independent living, how many of those are affordable or is that?
We, you know, we work toward, there's no licensure that allows you the affordability on that side, but we have worked very hard to maintain one bedrooms in studio apartments. So that's about 25% of our inventory. And we held those entrance fees for years to make sure that they didn't outpace the housing market in Bloomfield. So to make sure that someone could sell a modest home in Bloomfield and be able to take that entrance, you know, excuse me, that, those monies and pay the entrance fee and have all their future care. And of course, once they're on our campus, they have the assurance of, even if they run out of money, that the foundation or through the state and federal programs would provide that support. But keeping the studios and the one bedrooms is the affordability. The foundation has also made gifts in terms of covering portions of entrance fees. But it enables us to be a true community in every sense of the word.
Great, that's excellent, thank you.
And I don't have any questions, so we'll go to comments. Any comments from anyone from the audience?
No comments.
Hey, no comments, then we'll start with, once again, we'll start with Commissioner Blint and then Commissioner Hussein for comments.
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hussein.
Yeah, good, thanks again. Again, don't take it I'm being hard, I'm just being same to all applicants. I know you're a great applicant in town, you're a great resident, but I still have to ask the same questions that I ask all TPZ applicants that come in that, you know, if I'm going to review or approve something, I'd like to see the complete package and not just part package. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mallette, comments?
I really love the upgrades at the south entrance. I remember when we approved the solar panels going in, and we were so excited about solar panels and the sparse, you know, landscaping around it. So this is a wonderful addition to that. So nice to see the progression over time. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Peters.
I'll say, I too am excited about the upgrades to that entrance because I pass by that every day going to work. And just to see that you guys are committed to improving the look and the aesthetic of the community, I greatly appreciate because not every applicant wants to go above and beyond, and it shows that you care. And I greatly appreciate it. And I have a comment for Commissioner Hussein, that the plans are on the website, we should utilize our website too.
Thank you. Commissioner Goff?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I'm supportive of this plan. I think it's, you know, I do a lot with people at Seaberry. And I was very pleased in terms of the going for arboretum status and what they do to the campus. We often do hikes at the Wild Woods Trails. So I'm fully supportive of this. The one thing I would like to bring up, just as a general, general comment to think about for the future. When we approved this in, what, 1992, I guess it was rezoned, and then whenever the master plan was initially approved, we approve a certain density, and then we allowed that to be increased in 2018 or 19, whenever, you know. Eight sixteen or eighteen, whenever, you know, whenever the master plan was approved, the changes to the master plan were approved before. Uh, the, the finished uh, product. Um, here, there's not much change. It looks like it's a slight increase. But I don't think the purpose of our regulations is. There's a, there's a maximum and it can keep ratcheting up. Um, so. While I'm fully supportive of this, I think that it would ultimately behoove us to have some idea. Of what the maximal size you're ultimately looking at is.
Have you addressed that?
Sure.
Yes, so as I noted, um, this particular project has everything to do with the fact that we've been rightsizing. And so even though we're showing that total future at two sixty-eight, it's gonna come back to exactly where we are, so we're gonna be net zero. After this addition, and we eliminate some future inventory, so we can present that master plan. Um. Um, as soon as, as soon as possible, but meaning. There is no future growth for this campus relative to number of units. It will come back down to that two fifty-one for independent living. Um, we do believe that this is the last leg or last phase for this particular campus. We'll continue to upgrade it. But there's no additional um, sort of buildings and, and structure. Um, it's just a matter of rightsizing the inventory to ensure that everything that we do have makes sense and that it's marketable.
Right, thank you for that. That, that's all my comments.
Uh, and Commissioner James.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I am also very excited about the plans. Um. I know Seaberry has been a great valuable community and resource within our town, and. Um, I just appreciate the time and care put into, um, putting together this um, proposed expansion. Um, I agree with Commissioner Blint that the tree selection is gonna be very beautiful. Look forward to be able to drive by and just take into the sights and. Um, yeah, um, yeah, so uh, thank you for um. You said, paying such attention to the, your resource and how it contributes to our town overall.
Hey, and I'll just echo what uh, my fellow commissioners have said. I think you guys did a great job with this new expansion. And uh, you always do a good job with your landscaping, so I don't expect anything different. Um, I think Bloomfield is very fortunate. We got two five-star facilities in our town with Dunkster and Seaberry. And so we love seeing both of you guys um, do well. So I'm very supportive of this.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just for the record, I, thank you, Mr. Peters. I just saw it online. Cause it was not part of the drop, the Dropbox, the Dropbox package that I got in the email. I do apologize. I did, I'm back from New York shortly, and I um, I just looked at what was in the Dropbox that I got in the email. I just take a looked at it and it looks good. I, I saw the architectural plans and I saw what I, I looked at um, what I wanted to see, so I do apologize. That was my fault. Thank you, Mr. Peters, for correcting me.
Okay. Um, with that said, would the applicant like any closing remarks before there's a motion to close this application, public hearing? No? Okay, with that said, the chair entertain a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner James. It's been seconded by Commissioner Peters. Are there any, are there any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, the chair votes aye. Now the chair entertain a motion on this application.
Um, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the application for two hundred Seaberry Avenue, special permit application for changes to dimension. Dimensional elements in the master plan per section five point four point H of the zoning regulation. For a new proposed addition and demolition of two cottages in the P E C district. Application. Applicant and owner is Church Home of Hartford Inc. In care of Renee J. Bernesconi, sorry if I messed that up, president and CEO. And in collaboration with staff comments. Uh, I believe it's dated December nineteen twenty twenty-four. Um, as outlined in first, as the application type for the special permit master plan. And I believe there are numerous amount of conditions, so I'll list, I won't list them all. Um, and the plans that are dated.
October twenty eighth.
October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. And I should also probably reference the architectural plans that are online, that are also dated November first, twenty twenty-four. And any additional comments made by staff today? And I think that's it. That includes the special permit, I believe, right?
Just, just one quick thing. Um, October twenty, twenty twenty-four with revisions.
Um, with revisions. Thank you.
Provisions.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Peters. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey. Um, la- last night, last item on the agenda is uh, new business or any staff reports?
No other business, Mr. Chairman, other than to uh. Again, thank you all for your service and to wish everyone a joyous and safe uh, holiday season. And we look forward to seeing you in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, and the same to you. Uh, at that point?
Oh, sorry. I just know. Thank you, sorry. Uh, I know at last meeting, we talked about potentially setting up a special meeting. To just talk about the inclusionary zoning draft. Um, sometime in January.
Okay, um.
Just wanted to, I just don't want it to get lost in, in the, in the mix.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, our January meeting is what, January?
January meeting is on the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth.
Okay, um.
It's a week early. Um. That's gonna basically be focused, you know, depending on. How much um. Conversation you think you're gonna have on the P O C D at that meeting. Uh, we could certainly also schedule uh, further discussion on inclusionary zoning. I think that's. That's um, a difference. I don't think we're gonna have a, a great. Number of applications, and, and we're gonna start, as I indicated, we're gonna start restricting those. So if the commission wants to also have some inclusionary zoning conversation at that meeting, um, staff will um. Prepare the necessary material.
Okay. Did Gomond of New York submit the um, information or requested from them yet, or was that already on hand about the, the um? We had to request something, I forgot what it was. I think it was the best practices, but.
Yeah.
Um. They referred us, I sent out one piece that um. That was, that was referred to. I'm not sure that they were gonna get us any additional information. I'll have to check my notes, Commissioner. If so, I'm sure we can get it quite quickly.
Thought it was something from a Prague or Scrog, wasn't it something?
The West cog, um, John sent the West cog study.
Yeah, they did send that out.
It was the West cog study, right?
Plus the Goff, plus the Garmin.
Financing plan that they had put together. I did send that out.
It has like a hundred some page.
Yeah, it was a big document.
Okay, um, so, so Renee, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner James, are you comfortable with adding that on the agenda?
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be nice. Um, I do fear if it gets to be a crunched conversation, that we're always kind of limiting. Or not being able to really get into the details of it, so. If that does happen in January, then like, we'd want to have like a, a meeting where we could just discuss. Inclusionary zoning regulations and really make some significant progress on a draft that we would go to a public um. Public meeting, public special meeting for that.
Alright, so then we'll, we'll, we'll make a promise that uh, if we don't get through it at the next meeting, we'll definitely have a special meeting. Directly after that to, to get that wrapped up.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, uh, yes, you can add that on the agenda for the next meeting?
The other, the other thing we need to discuss is this sidewalk waiver and this sidewalk item that keeps coming up. My, my concern is that, and as much as we'd like to force applicants to put in the sidewalks, if they are incomplete sidewalks. On town roads, we have to get a understanding of the risks that are involved, because even if we force an applicant to put a sidewalk in. And let's assume that we said, hey, it's a great thing for connectivity. What if a few of those houses are, you know, seniors or someone that needs, you know, some sort of assisted living? And they, they don't wanna take on responsibility of clearing that sidewalk during a snowstorm. Does the town take on that responsibility? Who takes on that responsibility?
Property owners.
It's, it's rest with the property owners. And you, you're concerned, but that's who it rests with. Town does not take on that responsibility.
Right, so then if we're forcing the sidewalk issue, and then we're saying, hey, we want sidewalks for everyone because we wanna make it connective now. But then we're, we're encumbering or we're putting others at risk, then is it worth it? So I just want, I don't wanna start that. I just want us to address all the things that needs to be addressed and mitigate everything that we need to mitigate, so we could make it a connective. Connective streets and include the streetscape, but we have to look at the entire thing as a whole package, not just. Because the applicants wanna put in a sidewalk, that means it's gonna benefit everyone in the street, right?
Well, I mean.
Good point.
Yeah, i- i- isn't it a situation where we have the regulations in there where it fits? But in the event, say like an application like tonight, would we wanna force a sidewalk on Watkins Road?
Right, it would only be within their property limits though, right? It won't be the entire Watkins Road. It would only be within their property limits. So you would have a sidewalk that. Stops at their property limit, right? It doesn't go until the end of Mountain, and it doesn't go to the end of Seaberry.
Simsberry.
Or Simsberry, sorry.
That's correct. We cannot, we cannot require off-property improvements.
But, you know, can I make, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, we need, we should continue this conversation. I agree with Commissioner Hussein. It's an important conversation to have, and if you, we go back, I think, to the conversation we had when we passed that. One of the issues we talked about was, this is a great idea, because it's going to, you know, it's a catalyst to connectivity. But it, you know, it doesn't deal with the fact that. There's a sidewalk here, there's, there's nothing here, but maybe there's one over here. It's, the, the idea is that, you know, once you get some, hopefully critical mass, people will start connecting them.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's been, you know, it hasn't worked real well for Bloomfield so far. But that was, that's sort of been the strategy behind the East Coast Greenway. As different towns have been, have built their pieces of the greenway. All of a sudden, it becomes a lot more attractive for your town to build yours and, and to connect to it. So I think we need to have that conversation, and I, I, you know. I think we all understood the issues tonight and uh.
Um, but, but.
You gotta start somewhere too, you know?
Right, Mr. Chair, maybe.
Um, can I just make one other comment in terms of the Ja- Ja- January meeting?
Sure.
We also need to uh, finalize the cannabis regulations, I think, because doesn't the moratorium run out?
February, I think.
March, okay, good, so we have a little more time. Thank you.
Oh, I was just gonna say, may- maybe we could. And it could even be part of the P O C D as far as sidewalks. We can prioritize the areas. Um, like the high school. I just can't understand, we finally got Mountain Avenue.
Right.
Finished, but we still don't have a high school, and that's a big issue, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I think Terry Plains, uh, I see people walking up Terry Plains, and that's another one, this uh, similar to Mountain Avenue. So, kinda dangerous road on both sides. Well, this, this is true, yeah, yeah. Oh. Okay, um, with that said, we're gonna continue our conversations on the sidewalk. Um, but I guess the chair will entertain a motion at this point to conclude this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, listen, everybody have a safe and, and happy holidays.
Holidays, happy new year.
Two, thank you.
Well, Mr. Peters?